Turn that thing off. I don't like getting a text or something in the middle of it. I see you on the screen, so.
Well, it is 5:15, so good evening and thank you for joining us for Planning Commission interviews being held before our council meeting this evening. Welcome to our candidates. We have Peter Lehman, Mark Ritz, and Matthew Simmons. Thank you for being here tonight, especially when the weather is so nasty outside to be getting here, so thank you. We will be interviewing these three candidates tonight for two vacancies with terms ending in March, March 31st, 2025. And we'll start with Peter and then go, well, this says alphabetically by last name, but it might be easier just to go down the line if we, yeah, if we agree to that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna change the script here. We're gonna start with Matthew and then we will go down the line in kind of a round robin order, so everybody will have a chance to be the first person to answer the question. And so, please limit your answers to around one minute each. And so, I will ask an opening ques- actually, council member Atkins Salazar will ask our opening question and then we'll just go down the dais here and ask questions that we have for you folks and give you an opportunity to answer. So before we begin, do we have any members of the public wanting to comment on this item? Or online, if there's anybody online? Okay. Thank you, Patricia. And if you wanna make your co- oh, yeah, you don't have a microphone. We will move it over there.
I'm sorry, I just walked through the door, so I'm assuming you're talking about the applicants. So I just have a couple quick things. I think when we fill these seats, I think we should really look at candidates that will be open and non-biased and really try to work out details and maybe not coming on for one issue, and one issue item on the Planning Commission. I think this is something, I mean, the seats that we're filling with Kimberly and John, we need to honor kind of people that can really, really bring a lot to solving problems that the Planning Commission works on. So I know there have been people in the past who have called us white privileged landowners when we bring our concerns to the Planning Commissioners and have stated that they're frustrated with the amount of time it's taking with the Gateway Project, and it should have been passed. And so, and these are kind of concerns from the community that I have. And so anyways, I guess I'll leave it there, kind of vague. I think you all know a little bit of what I'm, my concerns are. And I also am, I don't know, it appears a little bit that Gina, who is an applicant, is, she's listed as a paralegal with the law offices of Bradford C. Floyd. And so there's a, I think there could be a possible conflict of interest with the Gateway Area Plan if, so anyways, that was a concern. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Anybody else waiting to comment on our interviews this evening?
Good evening, Gregory Daggett. I would say similar things, that we just need somebody that's open-minded, that doesn't have any particular agenda either side. I think we need also candidates that are thinking a little bit out of the box, because as we've seen through this process, some basic things have not been answered from the standpoint of why are we even debating over four stories from the standpoint that we have Dan Coe that in the last two weeks has basically said that it's not affordable to go over two stories, uh, four stories, excuse me, because of the cost of, you know, higher, higher than that. It's concrete for the foundation, building construction. So that's their view of it. So we've been spending a lot of time, Planning Commission members, that from the standpoint of no one's asking the basic question of why, why are we spending so much time and energy, you know, debating this when it's not gonna be affordable over four stories? I would also address the fact that simple questions like Arcade Fire Department, they had a meeting early in August, and they were quite explicit that wait on a decision on anything with, with over four stories because they needed to supply all the information. And what happened after that? Basically, you, you had a meeting and you decided to go against that pretty important decision of theirs. And they still haven't actually met with you guys regarding that. And the third thing is no one's addressed, which we have somebody who's an attorney here that's a candidate from the standpoint of the Coastal Commission, that was completely ignored. And I did get feedback from the Planning Commission on that, that they were grateful for me pointing out how it was in conflict with that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and I continue to ask that all of those who want to serve in capacities for the City of Arcata really have vision, be visionaries, future thinkers. I talk often about the overview effect, the big picture. I know we have to get down to nitty-gritty sometimes, but sometimes we don't pull back and connect the dots, even in locations in our community, and activities in our community, and building in our community. So I would hope that the Planning Commission, along with the City Council, you know, becomes visionaries in 2023 for the future of our community. So I hope to see people on the dais there who are visionaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay. Any more public comment on our interviews tonight? Yes, please, come on up.
Hi, I'm Sherry. Some of you know me. Happy New Year and happy Storm again to everyone in the room. None of us who speak frequently here at Planning Commissioner City Council meetings have applied to be commissioners. We're obviously pretty biased, and I think it would do the community good if the council approves new commissioners who have not shown any obvious bias, or who are not employed by a person who stands to reap financial gain if the Gateway Area Plan is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any comments online? I'm sure.
Not seeing any.
Okay, great. So that means we can get started. So we will begin, Matthew. You will answer first for our first round of questioning, and the question will be asked by council member Atkins Salazar.
All right. Thank you to all the candidates and welcome, and thank you for being willing to show up and to volunteer your time for the city. We greatly appreciate it. So I'll ask the same question, and it'll go to all three of you. So tell us a little bit about your background or experience related to urban planning and/or land use.
Hi. So first off, thanks for having me here. I really appreciate it. So I'm a lawyer. I graduated law school in 2020. And while in law school, I took a class on land use and urban planning. And before I took that class, it really wasn't something that I knew very much about or thought about, but it was like the most fascinating class I'd ever taken. It made me totally rethink how I think about cities and how we all relate to each other. I found all the, you know, the wheeling and dealing of zoning and how Planning Commission processes work and SEQA and all that really fascinating. And the other great thing about that class was I got to talk to a lot of students who weren't lawyers. They were in the planning school. And I got to talk to them about, you know, what their thoughts were about how our city should look and what they were dreaming to do. And so with that background, I decided I wanted to get more involved in local planning. And so for the past year or so, I've been coming to every Planning Commission meeting and really trying to be involved here on a local level and understand the issues, because I think it's really important. And, you know, it's the decisions that are being made that are gonna impact the future of the city.
Thank you. And would you like me to read the question again, or do you have it?
Please do.
Sure. So if you could just tell us about your background or experience related to urban planning and/or land use?
Okay. My background is actually in business. I'm a, I'm the, one of the owners of Kinetic Coffee here locally for the last 17 years. I've also spent enormous amount of time working in the bicycle industry, in the outdoor industry as a product developer, product manager. So my background is, is very much in analytics, and the ability to look at a number of different factors to try to figure out the best return on investment, and to be sure that, you know, the highest number of people are getting the highest amount of service out of a particular project.
Thank you. And then same question. Would you like me to read it again? Sure. So tell us about your background or experience related to urban planning and/or land use.
Also, thanks very much for having us here and the opportunity to serve on the commission. My background is as an environmental engineer. I founded the Schatz Energy Research Center at Humboldt State University, worked there for a third of a century. I'm an expert in renewable energy. And for a number of years in the 1980s, I served on what was then called the Design Assistance Committee for the City of Arcata. So I have experienced, although quite a while ago, working with exactly the same issues that the commission will face and is facing for the city. I will say, this is a very exciting time for this city with Cal Poly Humboldt growing and the Gateway Project happening. There's a real opportunity to make this a wonderful city, and I hope to be part of that. Thanks.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. We're gonna start with Mark. Okay, so your question is, describe your experience or provide an example of a time where you had to work with multiple viewpoints to build consensus.
Well, as I said, I've, I've worked as a businessman for many years. One of the places where I did get, where I definitely had some conflicts that I had to deal with was when I was the president of the Arcata Chamber of Commerce. We had a lot of conflicts happening with the then executive director. We also worked really hard to develop a relationship with the farmers market. Under, it was during my presidency that we started the walkabouts that we do on a, on a monthly basis. And we've done, I think, a great job there of just bringing in very disparate attitudes and opinions and bringing the group together to a common goal, which is to make Arcata a better place.
Wonderful. Thank you. Peter, I'll repeat the question. Describe your experience or provide an example of a time where you had to work with multiple viewpoints to build consensus.
As the director of the Schatz Center, I've been the principal investigator, the director of a number of large projects. And I had to work with multiple agencies, the, the bureaucracies at the state of California, the California Energy Commission, the Public Utilities Commission, the Department of Energy for the federal government, and lots of local entities to get projects on the air. So I was the principal investigator for the Blue Lake Rancheria microgrid and for the airport microgrid, which just opened recently. And I can tell you, there were many, many parties involved in that project, and they all had to be brought together.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Matthew, describe your experience to provide an example of a time where you had to work with multiple viewpoints to build consensus.
Yeah, so right now in my work at Epic, I'm involved in a coalition trying to change the management of a state forest down in Mendocino County. And we have so many different, you know, viewpoints and members in this coalition. There's local landowners, there's two Native American tribes, there's activists who just wanna like go into the forest and climb up into a tree and sit there all day. And getting all these different groups of people who all agree on like the end goal, but don't at all agree on how to get there is really challenging. But I've grown a lot and developed a lot of skills, you know, working with people, resolving differences, sitting people down and getting them to talk through it. And I feel like I've really grown from that experience.
Thank you. Okay, so this question will go to you first, Peter. And so the question is, what's your current level of knowledge of the city's long-term planning efforts, and including the Gateway Plan?
Well, I've done some homework to come here today. So I've, I've read the Gateway Plan and listened to the video, and I, I feel like I am up to date on what's going on in the city. I subscribe to the local newspaper, which I read every day. And in my work at the Schatz Lab, I'm familiar with lots of local people. I've worked with people here at the city and people in the county to undertake various projects. So I feel like I'm pretty connected with the local community.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, same question to you, Matthew. What is your current level of knowledge of the city's long-term planning efforts, including the Gateway Plan?
Yeah, so I've been attending every single Planning Commission meeting for the past year. I've read through the Gateway Plan. I've read through the general plan. I feel like I'm, I'm pretty up to date on where those efforts are and where the debate currently is. And I'd say it certainly, I've formed opinions about it myself, but I'm always open to hearing from members of the community and learning more about these really important documents that are gonna shape the future.
Thank you. And I can repeat the question one last time here for you. What is your current level of knowledge of the city's long-term planning efforts, including the Gateway Plan?
Well, like Pete, I've been doing my homework when I decided to apply for this position. So I have studied the Gateway Plan, the latest rev. I've also been watching the Planning Commission meetings, spent some time doing that, and pretty much understand, I think, where things are headed. I know where I would like to see it head, which is to keep the community, keep this a very community-oriented area. I've lived in areas where I've, I've been fortunate enough to live in areas that have been very community-minded, like Arcata. And I've also had to live in places which have not been that way. And I really prefer Arcata, and I wanna keep that part of the, of the city strong in order to continue to live here.
Wonderful. Thank you. Our next question will be asked by council member White. We will start with Matthew on that one. Yes, going back around the bend.
All right. Thank you. Are you familiar with the time investment required of commissioners? And how have you familiarized yourself with the Planning Commission work?
Yeah, I, I think I am familiar with the commitment, you know, the bi-weekly meetings, and then reading all the materials, obviously, as well. And then also being open to the public and answering people's emails and questions, because I really do wanna make sure that I'm, I'm fulfilling that role as well as a planning commissioner. I think I'm ready to take on that work, and I'm actually really excited to, you know, be able to apply myself to this role.
Thank you. Mark, same question. Are you familiar with the time investment required of a commissioner? And how have you familiar, uh, familiarized yourself with the Planning Commission work?
I am quote-unquote retired, so I do have some spare time on my hands right now. I do, for the coffee company, I spend most of my time doing analytics for it these days. So I do have the available time, and I'm pretty much up to speed on what the, the position requires. So yes, I feel confident that I could hit the ground running.
Thank you. And Peter, same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
Yes.
Absolutely. Are you familiar with the time investment required of commissioners? And how have you familiarized yourself with the Planning Commission work?
I am familiar with the time requirement. As I said, I used to be chair of the Design Assistance Committee, and our workload was very similar to the current Planning Commission. And like my peers here, I have looked at the Planning Commission meetings, and I've looked at their agendas, and I've looked at their workloads. And yes, I'm prepared to do that work. I can say that my work at the Schatz Center is now decreasing somewhat. I used to be in a leadership position. I'm not anymore, and I have more time, and I'm eager to give it to the city.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think I have the next question. Whoever starts, Mark. Okay. During a meeting, you're given a staff report that reviews a project that includes several hundred pages of the project materials, including maps, environmental review, traffic studies, et cetera. Share the process you would use to synthesize information or formulate a decision.
This is right in my bellywick. And the first thing I would do is I would read through the entire thing. Then I would pull out those tidbits that are gonna be really important, like looking at a map. If we're, if we're talking about land use, we wanna make sure the land use is gonna be in the correct location. And then going through the rest of the, the flow of it, just to understand as much as I can, and be prepared to ask detailed questions of staff in order to clarify any questions that I might have for them.
Thank you. So I guess it's Peter next. So during a meeting, you're given a staff report that reviews a project that is included several hundred pages of project materials, including maps, environmental review, traffic studies, et cetera. Share the process you would use to synthesize information and formulate a decision, please. Thank you.
I'm smiling because I do this for a living and have for the last 40 years. I would read the report. I have read many reports like it. And I would formulate the kind of concerns I have, write them down, and bring them to the meeting. Again, I, I've done this many, many times over the various projects I've worked on.
Thank you. So during a meeting, Matt, during a meeting, you are given a staff report that reviews a project that includes several hundred pages of project materials, including maps, environmental review, traffic studies, et cetera. Share the process you would use to synthesize information and formulate a decision, please.
Yeah, so I'm an environmentalist, but I love to print stuff out and write all over it, and like put sticky notes on all the pages where I have additional questions. I usually read through the whole document once first, marking all the places that I wanna go back to as I, as I read through it. And then I like to sort of sit with it for a day usually. And we were talking about how we do this for a living, reading through large documents like this, especially SEQA documents, is what I do at work all day, usually with, you know, the mindset of sort of attacking a document. But I think that, that ability sort of can translate into, you know, thinking about whether or not to approve a document just as well. And so I'm excited to have another opportunity to do that kind of work.
Thank you all.
Wonderful. So we do have a little bit more time, so I wanted to ask one more question of you folks. And so I guess, Mark, no, Peter, you would start with this one. And so I just wanted to ask, we've talked a lot about the Gateway Plan, but even besides that, what do you believe is one of the most significant planning challenges that the city is facing today?
That's a good question. I, here's what I think. I've been spending, I, I think the most critical issue of this century is climate change. And I have been spending my life dealing with climate change from the point of view of trying to get more renewable energy into our society. But that's only part of the issue. In fact, that's not the hardest part. The hardest part is designing our cities so we get people out of our cars and we get them to walk and bike. And that's the challenge of the next century. And that's the challenge that Arcata is facing and trying to deal with in the Gateway Plan. And I think that's where our effort should be.
Okay. Thank you, Peter. Same question to you, Matthew. Again, what do you believe is the most significant planning challenge in the city today?
Yeah, so I think that's an excellent answer, and I completely agree. But I think maybe even a more immediate challenge is housing and the lack of housing in our city. I, I think, you know, especially for folks who currently own their home, it's, it's hard to know just how crazy the rental market is and how much rent has increased for a lot of folks. And so I think building more housing so that we can have people stay and keep rents under control is incredibly important. And then building that housing in a way that keeps the, you know, the character of Arcata that we all care so deeply about is really important as well. You know, I, I grew up in a place that's sort of a sprawling suburbia, where everyone drives a long time to get to work every day. And I, I don't think that's what we wanna see Arcata and Humboldt become. And so, you know, developing a plan that gets us out of our cars and also make sure there's room for everyone is, is the most important thing.
Thank you. And lastly, to you, Mark, again, what do you believe is the most significant planning challenge in the city today?
First of all, I think both of these gentlemen have given great, great responses to this one. I think that one of the, the major issues that we're going to have is the continued evolution of Cal Poly to, and its effects on, on the city. As it continues to grow, we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure available for the influx of both students and faculty and support staff. available for the influx of both students and faculty and support staff. So we need housing. We need transportation. We need all of those things. We need a lot, we need businesses that are gonna all be able to support the influx of people in a way that's going to keep our community strong, but not, and not become like another Santa Cruz or something like that. It's the last thing in the world I would ever want to see here. But if we can figure out a way to work with Cal Poly and jointly develop maybe some particular housing, you know, to address your point, because the majority of the people that are gonna be coming in here are gonna be students, in my opinion. But we're gonna have a lot, we will need the infrastructure. And I think that's the key thing that we need to study and work for.
Great, thank you. Council, any other final questions we want to ask? We have a few more minutes before our six o'clock meeting.
Yeah, just a real quick one. That's, do you have any investment properties or business interests that may present real or perceived conflicts of interest related to your work on the city's Planning Commission? And I think we will start with, I don't remember. Peter.
I don't know. I own, I own a rental property, and I own a home, and I own a vacant lot in Arcata. And I don't know the answer.
Sounds good, Matthew. Do you have any investment properties or business interests that may present real or perceived conflicts of interest related to your work on the city's Planning Commission?
I own no properties and have no business interests in the city.
Mark, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes, I have, I do not own any property. My wife does here in town. And I am the co-owner of a small business.
Thank you, folks. Okay. Well, or do you have another question that you wanted to ask? Okay, go ahead. Yep.
I was wanting to know if, like, who's first, I guess? Matt, how many stories do you think would be best for the city of Arcata?
I thought eight as a maximum was fine in the plan as it was originally written. Honestly, I've walked by seven-story and eight-story buildings. And once they're at that height, I don't really think it's gonna cause anyone too much of a difference between the two. And I think the added benefits you can get in terms of community benefits and density, which is really important for getting people out of their cars and allowing the city to be walkable, is worth the added height.
Thank you. Mark, do you want me to ask that question again?
Yes, please.
Yeah, absolutely. How many stories do you think would be best for the city of Arcata with regards to building height?
I would say that personally, I think anywhere between four and seven would be the absolute maximum. I would not want to see anything taller than that. I remember the shock when they built the Behavioral Sciences Building in, at HSU, and how huge that thing was compared to everything else in the, in the city. I think four makes, is probably the most sensible in that, one, our fire department can still handle it. Two, there's less efforts involved with ground, the development of the foundations. So I think both, for both of those reasons, I would probably stay with the four that we currently have.
Thank you. And Peter, same question.
I think getting as many stories as possible is a good idea. I agree that housing is a real issue. We need places for people to live. It is, housing is a human right. And the fact that there are people who are unhoused in our city is, is very sad. And I think if it takes eight stories to do that, our land is precious, and we're gonna have a lot more students. We're gonna have a lot more people. We're gonna have climate refugees moving here. I think eight stories is fine. And I think the foundational issues, those are, those can be solved. I think the fire department issues, those can be solved. I think the important thing is to house people and have them not have to use their cars.
Wonderful. Okay, well, if there are no more questions, no more questions? Okay, well, thank you to our applicants.
Thank you.
This concludes our interviews, and we will be making a decision later on at our meeting that starts at six. It is our first new business item, so it won't be too deep into the meeting. If you do want to hang around and see what happens, or tune in on Zoom at home. Okay, thank you guys so much, and we'll be back at six. Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you for viewing the January 4th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. The first item on our agenda tonight is a land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past action by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous people from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like to, please join me for the flag salute.
[inaudible] United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Shaffer?
President.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Stillman?
Present.
All present.
If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. One, if you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged into Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. If you are on the phone, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial star six on your phone. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first and then moved to online comments. We will not be going back and forth, so if you are wanting to comment on an item, please line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as public comment is requested for that item. Next item on our agenda tonight is going to be early oral communications. The city council values your comments. This 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, that the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set for a future agenda item or referred to staff. Speakers may be limited to two minutes. There will also be time for the public to comment specifically on each agenda item and again at the end of the meeting, under item 12. So please make your way to the podium if you are here to give early oral communication and line up behind that podium, or if you are on Zoom, raise your hand and press star nine if you'd like to make a comment.
Good evening, Gregory Daggett. I'm going to follow through with what the subject I was on last week was the noise element. This is the issue that I brought up that started last year in January where I went to the Arcata Police Department. Basically, they said, go to the city to get this enforced, we need money. I did do that, and then I also followed up from what the staff recommended, was to write a letter to three of you that are still on the council, two of you weren't there at the time when I wrote the letter, explaining the issue, explain why we're not in compliance. And so basically, the answer that I got was the same thing as the police said, that we don't have money to actually enforce this. So it's been one year, and I can see that there was plenty of money during that year to actually address this issue. So I don't know what the problem is. You guys have sworn to uphold the laws of the state of California. It's not a very difficult thing, you just have to turn to the city manager and make sure that this is done, and that's part of her job is to make sure this is enforced. This is also part of the Gateway. The Gateway project has had money that is funded for this, so, and I'm not talking about some quick little probe study where you just go out into these different areas to see what the noise element is. I mean, what I outlined in the environmental impact report for the Gateway project was based on the state of California, is to have a six-month study where you get a real idea of what the seasonal change is from morning, afternoon, to night. So this isn't a request, this is something you have to do, and if you don't do it, then I'll have to follow up with the state of California, and then they'll have to find out why you're not complying with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have number two in the audience? Is there a number two? The cards are numbered, so. Or you can go, Joanne. Yeah, take it away.
Greetings. My name's Joanne McGary, and it's the new year 2023. It's a new council. It's hopefully a new way of being for our community. We've been through an earthquake and an astronomic river, or whatever we're calling it right now. I've been reading some of the experts' pieces about what's going on in our climate and with our weather, and this is just what we have to look forward to for a long time. And that brings me to the concept of being in crisis mode and acting in crisis mode and operating in emergency and having significantly communicated emergency plans that the whole community knows about. A month ago, a woman died at the door of this city hall. Her name was Nancy Barnes. I happened upon her and another person the day before, I guess, that she died, and then came the next day to city hall and found out that she had been found dead that morning. And a lot of people showed up two days later to a city council meeting that didn't really get to happen very long because there wasn't a quorum. But there were a lot of people wanting to know why our community does not have an extreme weather shelter and emergency warming centers for people who are unhoused and in need, and that was a month ago. Today, just now, I found out earlier this afternoon, after many phone calls yesterday and today, that the Arcata House is setting up some extreme weather things, and I'm volunteering tomorrow, and others who are listening and out there, if you can volunteer, please contact Arcata House. But this has been a month that we've been asking for this, and it's just now that they're getting it together. And I know the holidays were there, but this is not acceptable. This is not acceptable, city council.
Okay. Thank you. More early oral communications.
Hello, council members. Glenn Caldwell, I live in the Sunset area, just here to voice my support for the city council approving a full refund for the appellant of the Westwood Garden Apartment planning decision. I live in that neighborhood.
Hey Glenn, so this is for items not on the agenda, so we'll come back because that is an agenda item. Thank you. Okay, appreciate it. Okay, items not on the agenda. Fred, go ahead.
Good evening, council, staff. I wanted to bring some praise to the project that was approved by the Planning Commission at their December 13th meeting. It's the Valley East Lofts. The developer is Will Adams, the architect is Julian Beck. It's a three-story building with 22 apartments. Excuse me, Berg, thank you. A mix of two, it has a mix of sizes, two bedrooms, one bedrooms, two sizes of studios. It has all electric appliances and high-efficient heat pumps for the heating needs. It has adequate parking, has inside locked bicycle storage. It's architect design, as we can see. The balconies face in different directions, they don't face each other, don't face a wall. In short, it's a good project, and it's good to see. It shows that a high-quality housing can be built in Arcata, and the developer evidently feels that human-oriented quality housing is desired in Arcata and has a place here. So just wanted to praise them in public, and I hope to see more like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it okay for me to take that spot since?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Go ahead, Jim. Yeah, we have plenty, we have time right now.
Hello to council tonight, and a happy new year and to staff. I'll be brief. The North Coast group of the Redwood Chapter, the Sierra Club, has voted to endorse the L Street Linear Park. In addition, we've gathered 770 signatures. For the above reasons and many others, we encourage the council to vote to designate the quarter as a linear park and abandon the L Street couplet that will pave over open spaces and reduce the quality of the future great Redwood Trail and the existing California Coastal Trail. Once again, the Linear Park, L Street Linear Park, does represent a guaranteed park in the Gateway. And I spoke on many other things, but at this point, I'll just leave it at that and once again encourage you to consider that space for better use. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have any early oral communications online?
We do, we have one. Go ahead, Sheri.
Hi, good evening. I just like to second what Joanne McGary said. We need something urgently for our unhoused. It's unconscionable that they are still outdoors through this storm and through the cold and through the earthquakes that we've had, so let's please do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Any more comments online?
No.
Okay. So thank you, everybody, for your comments this evening. We will now move on to item number eight, which is the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. If there is no separate discussion of any of these items, or if discussion is required, that item, but there is no, there we go. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. Item A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of December 15th, 2022. Item B, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of December 21st, 2022. C, biweekly report on dispersments. Item D, adopt ordinance number 1562, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending the Arcata Municipal Code Title 10, Chapter 3, Regulations for Use of the Arcata Martian Wildlife Sanctuary to update overnight time restrictions, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. Item E, authorize the city manager to sign a letter of funding commitment for the Humboldt County Edible Food Recovery Program. Would any council member like to remove an item?
Yes, I'd like to remove D.
Okay, item D. Any other items to be removed, staff or the public? All right. What?
Item C.
Item C. Okay, so we shall remove items D and item C.
Do we have a hand up online? Erin, do you have an item you want removed from the consent calendar?
No, my hand was up during the open oral. And it was said that I wasn't there, so I'm just... Can you hear me?
We can, yeah, okay. We'll have to hold.
So I had my hand up, and then when Sheri was talking, and then it was said that there weren't anybody else on there, so I just had a question.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I didn't see it up.
Yeah, there might have been a delay. Well, let's get through the consent, and then maybe we can go back to that comment briefly. Okay, so do we have a motion then to approve items A, B, and E on the consent calendar?
I would move for A, B, C, oh wait a minute, A, B, and E. D is off, and.
Does somebody want to pull E? Okay, we had that, and so, okay, we're going to pull E too then. There we go.
So it's A and B. I move for A and B. I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve items A and B, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So moving down the line, okay, so a member of the public has requested to pull item C. Is there any public comment on item C?
Last week, you had a caller that called in that was concerned about risk announcement, and he was specifically addressing the litigation. It was the amount of litigation that was going on in the city and the amount, and he thought it was kind of out of line. So the question I have has to do with the checks that are written, and I've noticed the last, since he brought it up, that the last couple of them have basically been like 15,000 every two weeks, so it's basically like 30,000 a month that were written to our city attorney. And I've also recently have read that there was an article addressing litigation that addressed, and participants in that litigation was the city manager, the attorney, assistant city manager, council member. So my question is, are there guardrails set in place as far as how this is all being dealt with? Because it seems like, you know, you're appointing certain people to do certain acts, and they're maybe profiting from that certain act too, and you're also, individuals are involved in signing off that whole thing, so, you know, that's basically my question of the ethics of it, is this something, it seems kind of very unusual, the whole arrangement, and so I would like to see if somebody could address, how's that working out? Is there a second attorney that's involved in the case so that the city attorney is not involved directly, and then also possibly, you know, charging hours for that? So I think that's something pretty, I think the public, there's some people out there in the public that brought this up, that they're very uncomfortable with this whole arrangement. Thanks.
All right.
So I would move for adoption of C, biweekly report on dispersments. I'll second.
Okay. Is there any more comment on item C online, Karen, by chance?
No public comment on item C.
Okay, great. All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So I wanted to bring up one thing on D. So under number 10625, in the, it says airspace, and it says that we won't have any hang gliders, kites, model airplanes, and hot air balloons. What about drones? I don't know if you want to include them or not, but I thought possibly it might be something to add. I do know at the airport, that's one of the things, you can't have drones anywhere near planes, unless you wanted to have drones to take pictures of what all the marshes look like, but just not for fun.
The city has a separate unmanned aircraft ordinance, the drone, I'm sorry, I can't remember the acronym, the Drone Ordinance, and that regulates the spaces in which they are allowed, and I'm sorry, I am not remembering right now if it prohibits around the marsh area, but we could certainly look at that. It's not, so, we could look at that and then get back to you, but it's not, I know, it could be.
I just thought maybe it could be added.
I can chime in, actually, and say that it does prohibit areas above the marsh currently, unless there is a nature area entrance permit, so recreational drones couldn't be flight above the marsh, but if, say, someone wanted to do aerial imagery or LiDAR or scientific study, they would go through our nature area entrance permit process, and then we would allow for drones.
So I just thought maybe you'd, you know, because everything in here is sort of fun things to do. Hot air balloons, they're fun. Hang gliders, model airplanes, kites, those are, you know, they're fun. So are drones. So I just, that, I shouldn't.
Is the council interested in a sort of cross-reference, you know, so that this picks up the other part of the municipal code that specifically regulates drones? I mean, if so, then it would be reintroduced, and I don't have that site, so we would have to bring it back, reintroduced and then re-adopted, so.
I don't know what the rest of the council feels on that. I just saw that, and I thought that would be something to add.
Yeah, I think if it's governed by a separate ordinance that is more specific overall to drones, I think it's, you know, pretty interpreted and said that that would be part of that, so I'm fine just, you know, going forward with it tonight, but.
I agree. I think if it's covered, then we're fine, and so I will make a motion to, for item D.
I was wondering if I could make a comment separate, and this one isn't fun. I received several phone calls, and then, of course, we all received the email from Caroline from North Coast Environmental Center, and I guess the concern is moving folks out that have nowhere to go, and the concern that Caroline said is that we'll be moving them from one environmentally sensitive area to another one. So her example was that they would be swept over to maybe Carlson Park, which is already inundated, and her recommendation was to not pass this and was hoping to use that fund to actually help folks that have nowhere to camp or to be. So this particular item is recommending that there would be, it's an incompatible use in that there would be no overnight camping, and so I just wanted to bring that to the forefront, being that I had gotten so many calls, and also we received an email at 3:30 today.
So what I feel like, it's a direct conflict, you know, the Friends of the Arcata Marsh are really interested in having the gate closed, and then a lot of the campers, they're interested in the campers that are camping in their vehicles that are, would be out on the end of I Street, at the very end, but a lot of the people you're talking about are not in vehicles, they're under the trees, and I've gotten pictures of those sent to me too. They're, and I think. They're, and I think she's talking about people wanting to clean up, et cetera. Those are the ones that are living under the trees off of, it would be Mount Trashmore area.
So, yeah, absolutely, I walk my Great Dane there every day, and in particular in G Street, I see telltale signs of folks living in the bushes and camping. And I see both sides, I understand as a visitor there that, you know, I don't want to have to see all of the garbage and, you know, it is definitely an issue. But at the same time, we're going to just move them from, it's like moving sand piles, except for that humans are not sand piles. And I guess that's my concern, is where do they go?
But I guess, can I just, the disconnect that I'm really seeing here is that we're not talking, I mean, directly about like moving anybody, like, we're just going to lock the gate, and if they're on the other side of the gate, they're locked in. And if they're not, then they're where they're going to go. And honestly, what I saw as the huge issue of this, most of the people that I spoke to, and what I personally see as the issue, actually had nothing to do with unhoused folks camping there, it had to do with people partying in that parking lot late at night. I personally know, because I have high school students that go and party at the marsh in the parking lot, and former students who I see posting videos on Instagram at the marsh at 2:00 a.m., smoking pot, you know, like, that, I think, is also one of the greater concerns, is that it had become a hangout for local youth to do nefarious activities late at night, because it's an isolated parking lot, and, you know, we had some incidences where like somebody hit an otter, and like, from driving recklessly on that road. And I don't, in my mind, there's a disconnect, because I don't see this as, you know, kicking anybody out, or not allowing people to use that parking lot, it's just closing the gate at a sensible hour to allow for the uses that it's intended to, for, so.
And I see that, too. I just got into this because of drones. But I can understand exactly why they want to close the gate, and they want to keep that traffic from going back and forth at night. But you have people that are camping, and that's not the same thing. They'll be there anyway, because they can walk. They are walking, because they don't have vehicles. So if there are no other, do we have a motion on the floor? We do, don't we?
I did see a comment before, but now I'm seeing a head shake, okay. Okay, so...
If there's not second, I'll second it.
Okay, so, yeah, Councilmember Agnes Salazar made the motion, Councilmember Stillman is seconding. Do we have any other public comment here in person, or on Zoom about this particular item? Yes, we're on item D.
So my name's Joanne McGary, and I was here for the last discussion about this ordinance. And I just need clarification, then. This is restricting the times that people can be in the marsh. So who, what do we consider the people who are camping in the marsh? And what's going to happen to those people? Are we addressing that, or is it just something that we're going to smooth over, and then all of a sudden there's going to be a big sweep, and people are going to be kicked out of the marsh because there's this ordinance, and it actually does include people who are camping there? I need just clarification on that, because it is really true, if people who are camping in the marsh overnight are going to be asked to leave, and, or maybe even forced to leave, where are they going to go? And I just wanted clarification on this ordinance with that particular user group in the marsh. What's the clarification about what's going to happen to the people who are camping in the marsh? Not the cars, but the people who are camping in the marsh.
We're talking about the cars, not the marsh, not the people camping in the marsh.
So nothing's going to happen right now to the people who are camping in the...
The cars is the cars. Trucks, vans.
Anybody else?
Locking of the gate. I mean, that's where I'm sitting at right now, and I'll defer to staff or city attorney to clarify it on a more, you know, legal level for you, but...
Yeah, we have not seen this as changing our current practice. It doesn't mean that individuals that are causing issues, where we receive a lot of complaints, and there is, you know, whatever, regardless of the issue, if it's loose dogs that are getting aggressive towards people, it doesn't mean that we will do no enforcement of those people, but it won't change our current practice. There is enforcement now on certain individuals, behavior-based, and that will continue, but this is not intended to change our practice.
So you just won't be able to go down there and party anymore, Joanne, I'm so sorry.
Well, safety's a real big issue for me, but also I was involved in Palco Marsh issues a while back, and was in a homeless woman's play, and what happened at Palco Marsh was ugly. So I just don't want the Arcata Marsh to have another ugly thing happen. So I just wanted clarification, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more public comments on consent calendar, item D?
Hi, my name's George Green, and I have a long history with the marsh, having been a former wildlife student, actually lived there, near there. I'm pretty much in favor with what's going on with the vehicles and the restrictions and so on and so forth, but I wanted to relay to you, like, an experience that happened to me just a little while ago regarding, in quotes, camper. And I was going around the log pond, and there was somebody that had a tent in the heart of the log pond, you know, there was a little trail that took you down to where the water was. And that tent was there, and I went by there, didn't go down, but just on the trail. And I could see it, I was surprised, because I knew that there were adjacent areas to the marsh where people had camped, and I found some fault with that. But anyway, when I went by, the person had an alarm, it's one that you pull, you know, the ones that make a squealing kind of a sound, you know? And then on my way back, I went by there again, and the same thing happened. And then I talked to somebody in the know that has a strong connection with the marsh at the interpretive center, and understand perhaps the person was hostile at one time, too. Anyway, my thought is that, just in terms of natural resources and in the environment, and I remember a while back, they had a, the tree, that's the tallest tree, the redwood, and the redwood parks up there to the north, the hyperion tree, where they didn't, it was getting degraded so much that they would not allow anybody to go out to see that tree. They wanted to restrict the area, because so many people went out there, that the whole environment around the tree was getting degraded. And I must say that, you know, they didn't make a distinction, and I have the article here, but they didn't make a distinction between people, oh God, being allowed to go there because they were homeless. And I know there's this Boise versus Martin and all that, but what I do believe is that there should be some kind of, maybe like a tent city, where there is, you know, heating concerns and so on and so forth to provide for the homeless. But I also think it's a safety hazard and a public safety issue for that situation to be allowed. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Okay, we had a motion from Councilmember Agnes Salazar, and a second from Councilmember Stillman. If there is no more public comment, we will vote on item D. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item D passes, and then I believe a member of the public had wanted to poll item E. So we will now accept comments or concerns about item E. Authorize the city manager to sign a letter of funding commitment for the Humboldt County Edible Food Recovery Program. Go ahead, Joanne.
Hi, again, my name's Joanne McGary, and I asked for this to be polled, because a lot of these issues about organic waste, and food recovery, and to-go containers that are all in the discussion that we're familiar with, I'm experiencing in the public a lack of awareness about some of these issues. And when it comes to the food recovery thing in a letter of commitment, it would just be nice for somebody to give a brief explanation of what that means, so that it's on video and it's taped, and so I can tell people when they're saying, what's going to happen to, you know, leftover food, or whatever? Or supposedly, there's a place where we can take it, or somebody to pick it up. So I don't know who can briefly explain this to me, because this is not something that a lot of people are really aware of. They're not aware of a lot of this stuff that's coming into practice and through ordinances and all. So can somebody just kind of explain this food recovery thing real quick?
Okay, thank you for your comments. Emily, would you mind giving just a few updates here for everybody? Present, thank you.
Sure, sure. Good evening, councilmembers and community members. So this letter of funding commitment for the edible food recovery program is part of the overall Short-lived Climate Pollutants Act, also known as SB 1383. And, thank you, and we have been working on complying with SB 1383 incrementally since November of 2020. Most recently, in November of 2022, staff provided an update on 1383 compliance, mainly focusing on the ordinance, which had since passed at the end of December. SB 1383, as staff has brought up in past council meetings, is very broad and complex, and includes a number of programs. And so this particular program is related to the edible food recovery component of 1383, which mandates a 20% reduction, or diversion, I should say, of edible food from entering the landfill. So in other words, 20% of edible food currently going to the landfill needs to be reduced and rescued, so that those in need are able to eat that food. And so 1383 includes a variety of requirements for jurisdictions, as well as food generators, in other words, grocery stores, restaurants, to comply with, as well as reporting requirements and education and outreach requirements. And so this piece is really the intended next step in being able to develop a regional program, because edible food resources are really distributed throughout the county. So in other words, food recovery organizations don't just work in the city of Arcata, they work countywide. And likewise, members of our broader Humboldt County are probably shopping across jurisdictional boundaries. And the requirements for the state law are the same for all jurisdictions. And so the intent is to start to develop a more regional program, such that the Humboldt County community at large is getting the same information, the same education for general community members, restaurants are getting the same information, we're all meeting the same requirements, we're working with food recovery organizations as a whole, and centralizing that information such that our jurisdictions can individually comply in the most cost-effective way. So that is probably the most long-winded way to simplify the requirements, and I'd be happy to dive into any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Do we have any questions from folks on the council?
No, I'm going to move to authorize the city manager to sign a letter of funding commitment for the Humboldt County Edible Food Recovery Program.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on item E. Is there any more public comment or final questions before we move to a vote? Okay. No, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, that gets us through the consent calendar and on to new business. So our first item under new business is to appoint up to two new members to the planning commission for terms expiring on March 31st, 2025. So do we have any questions or comments from the council? Or we can also take it out to public comment first, if we'd like to do that, and then ruminate on what we hear.
I would like to make a motion, but did you want to take public comment first? We had some public comment before.
Yeah, we had, so, yeah, we did have interviews right before this meeting, so we'll just go into public comment first, and then we can have a motion. So if there's anybody in person that would like to comment on us appointing two new members to the planning commission for terms expiring in March 31st, 2025, please make your way to the podium, or raise your hand on Zoom. We are now accepting public comment for item A. All right. No public comment on item A? Oh, okay, we got one coming in. Thank you.
Just wanted to say that one of the gentlemen discussed limiting the building height to less than eight stories. And while that does sound nice to keep our town quaint and small, I think it is short-sighted for our future. So I just want you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, well, then I will open it back up to the council for either a motion or any...
I would like to make a motion. I would like to move to appoint Matthew Simmons and Peter Lehman to the Arcata Planning Commission.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Stillman.
And I would like to thank all three candidates for coming and being willing to volunteer, and I would like to second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to appoint Matthew Simmons and Peter Lehman to the planning commission. Is there, it looks like there might have been a comment online?
It seemed like we had a hand that got raised late, if you'd like to take that. It is Erin, so, yeah, go ahead, Erin.
On this or other things, yeah, sorry about that, Erin, we forgot totally. Please, please go ahead.
You forgot about me, I know. And I probably couldn't have done it anyways, because I realize now the planning commission appointment has been agendized. So the thing that I wanted to consider, or maybe have somebody address, is that we, in this neighborhood, we may be concerned that there could be, I don't know if it's a conflict of interest, it's more, it's the appearance of a possible quid pro quo, when you have elected council members who received endorsements from people that are going to, are seeking appointment to the planning commission. And now that elected member is going to vote on somebody that gave them an endorsement, and then they can repay them with a vote. Is there an issue of quid pro quo here, or am I not understanding something? Thank you. Hello?
I think we're still here. We're curious.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for your comment there. City Attorney, would you like to address that?
The quid pro quo prohibition under state law has to do with financial gain that one obtains, and appointing a member to the planning commission is a legislative act, a political act. There is no financial kickback that I'm aware of in this, in this particular situation. So obviously, if the facts change, we can revisit it, but I don't know what the circumstances are that he was talking about at a sort of very general level. But quid pro quo does require a financial gain.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to appoint Matthew Simmons and Peter Lehman to the planning commission. All in favor? Aye.
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 I'm still learning the process. I guess I was wondering, is there no comment or discussion in the past? Oh, I guess we were just, I was hoping for some discussion and to explain why we chose what we chose, and...
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to do that if we want to do it. Just, yeah, I mean, process-wise, sometimes we feel a little awkward having to, you know, talk openly about these people up here, and we kind of maybe decide in our minds, but I guess it's important, you know, for us to make those comments. So, I mean, my thinking is just both, I think it's important to have a younger person, we have a lot of older people on the planning commission. I think having a younger face on the planning commission, especially somebody who is so qualified, both with legal knowledge and just involvement in the community. So I think Matthew's a very strong candidate in that sense. And then, I mean, Peter's institutional knowledge is just blows me out of the water, and the fact that he's, you know, served on a similar committee back in the 80s, and has seen the way that Arcata has evolved, you know, over all the years, I just, that kind of experience, especially from an environmental standpoint, I think is going to be really important with forward planning in the community, and why I was really, you know, my mind would be to support those two candidates as well. And, yeah.
So Kimberly, what is, do you have a concern?
I, more of just the process, I thought we were going to discuss, and it kind of didn't happen, so I was just wondering, like...
Well, in the past, my experience is, is that we used to do all our interviews in the city manager's conference room, and then we had COVID, and we have Zoom, and so we have different things now that no longer were like that. And so after we did our interviews, we had a chance to talk to one another, but that's no longer possible under this situation. And we just have to talk, whoever you talk to, and we, I feel like we have two very qualified candidates, and if I support them, and that's why I made a motion. But if you're, if you're unhappy with them, you need to speak up.
Again, I was just wondering, like, I thought there was going to be discussion amongst us, and there would be public input, and then we would make that decision. So I was just wondering about the process, but
And, well, and I know that it it can be, it can be a lot to process everything, but, and sometimes it feels, just because there's a motion and a second, that just kind of lets the group and the public know where we're coming from. And then you, we can absolutely can talk, just because there's a motion and a second, doesn't mean we can't discuss it. If people have things to bring up, that's a great time to do it. And then we go to a vote. I think it was just quiet, and so probably the mayor assumed there was no discussion. But, you know, we can, we can have it, you know, yeah.
Would you like to discuss?
Well, I guess, maybe just to point out, you know, since we are talking, Mark is retired and said that he has lots of time to put into the commission. And I feel like a time commitment is very important, because just leaving the planning commission for three years, I put a lot of time into it. So that was a consideration for me, and just looking at who has the time and put in the commitment that it would take to be on the commission. I also liked the idea that we had somebody who was a businessperson, and I guess I personally liked what he had to say about understanding the Cal Poly expansion and how that needs to be addressed. And I was impressed that he felt like we could meet both the housing needs at the same time of meeting and keeping the character of Arcata, which I think so many of us are thinking about, you know. In fact, he said a very pointed statement of, he didn't want another Santa Cruz, and neither do I. And so that was something that jumped out. Also, he addressed infrastructure, which I'm hearing from the constituents, that they are really concerned about that we have the proper infrastructure, Arcata Fire District, and those items being addressed. And so, yeah, I just was wanting, I thought we would talk about the pros, the cons, and those kinds of things. So that was what I was missing, I thought.
Yeah, and I, I hear
It was my first time doing this, so I just wasn't sure how we were going to do it.
And I hear those points, and I, you know, I, I stated how I felt about it. I respectfully disagree. I think we have plenty of business community folks on the planning commission already, and I think to widen that view, I mean, I think leaning more towards the environmental folks in our community, especially with the issue of climate change banging at our door. I think that those are the people that we want on the planning commission right now that have that institutional knowledge, especially with energy, with SEQA and law. And, I mean, that's where I'm coming from on it, so.
I think we already approved the motion, too.
Yeah, we kind of, we kind of fettered out on that vote. And I, I already asked for public comment, so
I, I don't
Yep. And we sat there, and I looked at everybody. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, that's Yeah, I'm, I'm going to defer to my city manager on process here, but I believe I already asked for public comment multiple times, and, and waited, and nobody wanted to comment on this, this item. And so we took one public comment, and then
No. Can I, can I have, I have something to add?
I just told you why I made my decision, so there you go.
So I just wanted to say that if you, if you look at all the other interviews that we've done, we, this would follow suit in that, there have been, I mean, I talked to one other councilperson, which I am absolutely allowed to do, and that was all. But if you notice, we've never gone deep into discussion of any of the volunteers that we've interviewed. It's, it's very personal, those people that are showing up. And so today was, was no different. If you go back and watch any other time we've appointed people to committee, I cannot recall having a lengthy discussion. It doesn't mean that we, we were doing anything that we shouldn't be doing, but we did an extensive interview for a half an hour, and we formed opinions, and we've discussed them, and we did ask for public input. So I think that we've covered the bases.
And this, and just to add, you know, I asked for public input at the beginning of this item, because, again, this is your chance for us to discuss what you have said as the public as well. And so thank you to our person that commented, but, you know, at this point, I don't feel comfortable deviating from that process. I have, I made a decision with my own brain, so, thank you.
We made a, we made a motion. We made a motion and had a second.
Yeah, I, I listened to, I listened to an interview that was half an hour long. I asked to hear from the public. You chose to not stand up and make comment. Thank you, Gregory.
Whoa, 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 Gregory, this, you should I heard, I, I made the motion.
You're going to need to sit down, please. Gregory, you're going to need to sit down, please. You're being disrespectful right now. Please sit down. No. Okay, so Okay, so again, thank you. So we had our interviews before this. We listened to what all these candidates had to say. We made evaluations in our own minds, and thought about, we had time to prep before and look at their resumes and applications that they sent in, to three very qualified candidates. And we had time to ruminate over that between the meeting and at the beginning of this meeting, and a motion has been made, and a second has been made, and we began to vote, and many people voted. So I am going to move us back to that vote, just to make sure our clerk was able to get all of those votes down. Yeah, let's just do a roll call vote, then. So we had a motion by Councilmember Stillman, and a second by Councilmember Atkins Salazar, again, to appoint Matthew Simmons and Peter Lehman to the planning commission for terms ending March 25, 2000, or March 31, 2025. Can we have a roll call vote from the clerk, please?
Mayor Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
I'm going to vote aye on Peter Lehman. I'm going to abstain from Matt Simmons, just for the sake of whatever propriety, even though I was not endorsed by Epic. Thank you.
Atkins Salazar.
White?
Can I do that as well? Not, I, I'm yes on Peter?
We have a full motion. You have to vote no. You have to vote no. Not now. You have to vote no, and then
So, so if you don't agree with the entire motion, you'll vote no, and then we'll go to a new motion. Or we can also move to separate those two candidates as well.
I think, are you just asking to abstain from one of the candidates? Are you asking to vote no on the candidate?
No, just, like she did to abstain.
Sure.
Oh, you have abstained. I think so.
Can I
I guess
Not really, no, but No.
So I guess my, I just wanted to have the discussion, so I will vote yes.
Okay. And so, still by numbers, that is a yes. So thank you and congratulations to our two new planning commissioners. And thank you to all of our applicants this evening. Okay, yes, so that will take us to item B. Councilmember White, yeah, go ahead, will be recusing herself.
So because I was part of the discussion process and on the planning commission, I need to recuse myself. So I bid you a wonderful evening, and good night. I will come back on Zoom, is that okay?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, we will see you virtually, and we'll let you know how long. Thank you.
And Kimberly, you can log on whenever you get home. I just leave you in the attendee side until, until the items are over, and then I'll bring you back in as a panelist.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you.
Okay, we are going to resume our meeting. Thank you. Okay, so this moves us to new business item B, which is to consider a partial or full refund to the appellant of the Westwood Garden Apartments Development Appeal Fee. Can we have a staff report from staff, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. The next item on your agenda is the actual appeal of the Westwood Gardens apartment development. And the appeal was brought by a tenant of the existing multifamily complex. The appellant does meet the qualifications to file the appeal for the project. And the appellant also requested that the City Council consider refunding the appeal fee. By way of background, the city has a fee that's established in our fee resolution. The cost of the appeal tonight is eighteen hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. That fee has been paid in full at the time the appeal was filed. Staff has done a little bit of calculation prior to the meeting. We estimated about three hundred and fifty dollars of actual fixed costs, not taking into consideration any staff time or city attorney time associated with the appeal. We do also have a translator here tonight. I don't know if her services will be needed for this evening, but would be about another three hundred dollars as well, in terms of actual cost. So with that, I will turn over just the request to consider a fee waiver of the appeal fee. And then we would be refunding all or a portion if that was the council's vote.
Excuse me, did you say the translator is about three hundred dollars? Is that what you said? Or am I mistaken?
Yeah, that's my estimate.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you for that staff report, City Manager Deemer. So do we have any discussion or questions from the council on this specific item?
Sure. City Manager, is there any kind of precedent that has come before about refunding any appeals?
This is the first request that I know of in my time here. I'm looking at David to see if he recalls. You know, we don't receive a lot of appeals, so this is a very unusual circumstance. I will say, in terms of the requests that came forward, some consideration that this was coming from tenants and not from neighboring, you know, properties or people that might have other financial interests. I think, at least, was a discussion point with some in the community. But we just don't get very many appeals, and I don't know of any requests that's come forward to ask for a waiver.
And I would only add that the request has been made of the council before to take up an appeal for a group, and that's happened at least once that I know of.
Well, I just want to say that I do support giving a partial refund back. And my reasoning being is because it is primarily the tenants that are coming forth with this. It's their space, they're concerned with it. And so I do support giving a portion of that money back. So maybe, you know, if others feel the same, perhaps we could talk about what that might be.
Well, I can see that, too. But if we're paying for a translator and we have a figure of three fifty, and we know that total is about six fifty, that's money we cannot return. Because I'm sure that translator is part of, not our request, I would think. I don't know where that came from. So that would be about twelve hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Okay. Yeah, just where I stand, I mean, this is a tenant brought kind of grassroots appeal that we're seeing here this evening. I definitely, in my mind, you know, if I was one of these tenants, I could not pay eighteen hundred dollars to appeal this decision. And so, you know, I'm leaning more towards refunding it completely. But, you know, if the motion is on the table to give a partial adjustment, I know there was a request for translation. And now I'm maybe even hearing that the translator might not even be needed tonight, which is really unfortunate, because we've already paid the translator to, you know, prep before this meeting, because you can't just throw somebody in blind and have them, you know, go over complex land use planning vocabulary. And so, you know, I definitely do support the refunding all, if not at least, you know, most of this fee.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion of refunding twelve hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Okay, yeah, from, is there a point from, yeah, our appellant's here?
Two thousand and fifty-four dollars and twelve cents. So the eighteen hundred dollars that's quoted was the old appeal fee number, but what we paid was over two thousand. And I have a receipt from the city.
You paid over two thousand, do you know how much?
Two thousand dollars, fifty-four cents and twelve cents. Two thousand, fifty-four dollars, twelve cents, thank you.
Well, I think then, maybe if we're getting, yeah, technical, that we could just, if folks want to, yeah, basically waive the costs minus the direct, you know, what the city has paid plus translation costs.
Which is approximately six fifty. So, my calculator is in the drawer. Let me get it out.
One thousand, four hundred, four dollars and twelve cents.
I think if you, yeah, made the motion to refund everything except for direct expenses, we could do an accounting, and if it's less than six fifty, we'll return that extra as well.
And you can say just not to exceed, you know, the six fifty or something.
Okay, well, I would agree to that.
So is that a motion, Alex?
I make a motion, but I don't know if there's a second.
Yeah, so the motion is to return the fixed costs not to exceed the amount of six hundred and fifty dollars? Is that what we're doing? Right, to return, sorry, yeah, return everything except for the fixed costs. And if it's less, if those costs are less than six fifty, they can have more of the money back. If they're more than six fifty, we're capping it at six fifty.
Yes, and I agree to that motion.
So it should, if, you know, it should come out to about fourteen hundred dollars is what we would be expecting.
So are you moving, are you making that motion?
I'm just clarifying yours and seconding.
Okay, thank you.
And I think we're trying to do the same thing here.
Thank you.
Does that work for you, Bridgette? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Now we will open this item to public comment and then return it back to the council for any final discussion. So we will now be taking public comment on item B, which is to consider a partial or full refund to the appellant of the Westwood Garden Apartments Development Appeal Fee. Okay, you will have three minutes on this item, thank you. Please go ahead, Fred.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I'm Fred Wise. What we have here is a very unusual situation for a variety of reasons. I understand there, it's been a long time since there's been an appeal. I filed an appeal about twenty-three years ago for the Windsor project. The cost then was a hundred and eighty-five dollars. It resulted in substantial improvements to the project. I worked with the developer on that. What's different about this is that the project went to the planning commission. There was a staff report. And there were some false statements in the staff report that I believe influenced the planning commissioners to approve the project. I wrote to the council on November fourth. I reset my email recently. I'll be covering this when we talk about the appeal. The, there are four distinct incorrect statements. The major one was calling the project unrestricted affordable housing for the community. It is in no way, shape, or form listed as affordable housing for the community. The five commissioners voted on it. We have comments from three of them, these are actual quotes. Christian Figuerera said, "We need to do what we need to do to move forward with having affordable housing." And he voted yes. Commissioner Kimberly White, then commissioner, said, "The question is, is what's the guarantee to have, to make it's going to be affordable?" Vice Chair Scott Davies, John Barstow had recently resigned. He said, "I'm going to invoke John Barstow in his absence to say that this makes sense because it meets our needs for affordable housing." My proposal, and I'll go into this more later, is that the commissioners were swayed by the desire, we all desire affordable housing in Arcata. That's a given. They overlooked many of items that I feel could not meet the findings. So we have a situation here, which is distinctly different from someone filing an appeal just because they don't like a project. Here we have procedural aspect of things. We have a staff report, which is not my opinion that it's wrong. It's clear that it's wrong. That's what makes this appeal different. My recommendation is, I would like to say that having a translator or having time, those are costs that the city has to bear. Those are part of doing business as a city. It has nothing to do with the applicant. I would recommend strongly that the applicant receive all of her money back. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Hi, council members. Glenn Caldwell, I live in the Sunset area, walking distance to this proposed project. I want to thank you for supporting refunding the appeal costs to the appellant. I do not live at the project. I am a property owner in the city of Arcata. I pay taxes, and I'm happy to see some of my tax dollars going to refund these appeal fees. That's all I have to say. Thank you, and sorry for speaking out of time on a non-agenda item at first.
No worries, Glenn, thank you.
Hello, I'm Adam Taylor, I'm resident at Westwood. I'd like to say that, first off, why doesn't the city provide translation free of charge? That is onerous to so many people in this community if they want to be able to understand what is going on at City Council or other operations of government. That should be refunded. Second, we believe that the city, the planning commission, had serious errors. And why should we have to pay for additional staff time if the staff did not do things correctly the first time? That should not be on the citizens of this city who file an appeal. This should be a total refund. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. First off, thank you very much for making the, well, just for getting a translator for this evening. Our community members that would require a translator couldn't make it due to the weather. It is definitely a needed service, just because there are so many families that are impacted by this project, who have little understanding of the details of the said project, because no information has been provided in Spanish other than what our group has put together in terms of notifying about meetings. Even at some of the planning commission meetings, we had families who primarily speak Spanish attending in solidarity with, I doubt they took much away from the meeting at all. To give you an idea of the people who live at Westwood Garden Apartments, we're made up of students, fixed income retirees, single moms who are working low-paying jobs, who would be severely hit with any kind of financial burden. And, you know, they're a vulnerable population and next up to be homeless if, you know, they had a significant cost incurred, like the whole appeal fee, for instance. One of our neighbors concerned with the development, he lives with disabilities and is on a fixed income. And he still wanted to support the appeal and the project and wanted to make sure that his home was still, you know, livable and nice for him. And I really lost it and became really emotional when he put twenty dollars into my hand and said, "This is all that I can afford, but, you know, I want to support." And so, even if you're taking a majority of the money and refunding it, even that six hundred dollars means a lot to the people who contributed, especially over the holidays. A lot of people sacrificed doing extra things nice for the holidays or seeing family. And so, just so you understand the kinds of sacrifices that we made in order to bring this forward to the council tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Elena.
Hi, my name's Will Suter. I'm also a renter in Arcata, and I would also like to recommend that you refund the entire cost of the appeal. I think that translation is definitely something that should be provided free of charge anyway by the city. I think that's absolutely a good use of our tax dollars. And I think, given the context of what is being appealed here, I think that the city covering the fixed cost on behalf or in kind for the tenants is also a good use of tax dollars. And as a renter myself, I can tell you that, you know, three hundred, six hundred dollars, and certainly not two thousand dollars, I could never afford that if I were to have to pay that to appeal to protect my home, which is basically what all these folks are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any more in-person public comment on item B? Okay, we will now move to Zoom public comment on item B. Do we have any comments online, Karen?
Give it just a second here. No public comment on this item.
Okay.
All right.
Go ahead.
You know, that is a really good point about having Spanish translation, you know. I think if we are going to be an inclusive community, especially in light of what's been happening to the community garden, you know, in the grand scheme of things, three hundred dollars is not, might not seem like a lot of money, you know, to the city. But I think for the people, the grassroots community that appealed this, I think it is probably incumbent of us to offer Spanish translation, probably to anything that is asked for. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to refund the full appeal for Westwood Garden.
I'll second that. So now we're in a place where we have two motions on the floor with two seconds, yet however, we are on a financial item.
I don't see how we can have two motions on the floor with two seconds. We have to take care of one motion, and then we have to go to the next.
Okay.
Cool. This is procedure.
So you take the second motion first, and then go back to the first motion, is the way that works.
Okay, so, great. The second motion, which was made by Vice Mayor Matthews, to refund the appeal costs in full for the Westwood Garden Apartments, and seconded by myself. And so we will take a vote on that. So, all in favor of that? Aye.
Aye.
You can ask for opposed. You are? Oh, you ask for those in favor and those opposed, when you, and you have to ask for opposed.
Okay, so those opposed.
I'm opposed.
I'm going to say no, but I, and can I, I would like to either go to vote on my other one or withdraw it, because I have another, another idea, so.
Yeah, I think maybe your idea might be going where my idea is, which is to meet in the middle of that and cover the translation costs as a city, but still ask to have at least our staff costs and fixed costs for the appeal be covered by the applicant. Usually the mayor doesn't make the motion, so if you want to go ahead, Stacy, do that.
So, just for a point of order, so where do we stand? We had a motion, we had, two people made a motion. So did it get passed or not?
No, and so now do we take your motion and?
Well, because usually it's like a stall me.
Yes, so I believe what happened is that the second motion failed. And so the first motion that you made is the one that is still alive. And the person who seconded it said that she, unless the motion is withdrawn, she's going to make a different motion.
So she's going to withdraw her second.
Oh, was that, it was?
Yep.
Stacy seconded, so she's withdrawing her second.
I just want to get, you know, our parliamentary procedure figured out.
I appreciate this.
Thank you.
So since I withdrew my motion, now there is no second to that. So I would like to make a third motion compromise, and I'm totally on board with what you guys are saying about the translation, so that I would like to refund all of the money except for the original, the three hundred and fifty dollars listed in our agenda for fixed costs.
And I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor. Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes with four votes out of four. Beautiful. Okay, thank you. And thank you, Alex, for correcting our process. You have more experience than all of us put together.
We can become really crazy, and let's try not to be.
Yes, exactly. Okay, so that takes us now to item C. I do have a note on here to discuss about our interpretation. However, I am hearing now from staff that that is not going to be happening, so I will skip over reading the parts in red. All right. So that takes us to item C, which is to consider an appeal of the planning commission's approval of the Westwood Garden Apartments multifamily project located at twenty-three fifty-one Westwood Court. So may we have a staff report from our community development director, David Loyah.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and council members. Before you tonight is the appeal of the Westwood Gardens project approval that the planning commission recently approved that was appealed. You'll see the appeal in attachment A. What I'm going to describe to you is a little bit about the process. I'm going to leave the appeal to the appellant. And then what I would recommend is that you then open it to public comment so that the applicant for the original project can hear all of the comments, and then offer that applicant the opportunity to rebut anything they wish to. After that open public comment portion, what I'd recommend you do is then bring it back to the council, and you can ask questions of staff, the appellant, or the project proponent. The items that I'd orient you to in your staff report beyond the appeal, which is attachment A, was that we included the entire adopted planning commission action as attachment B, and the planning commission staff report for your review. Now, the planning commission action is what you're actually taking into consideration. As the staff report says, you can either affirm that action that the planning commission took. You can modify it, affirm it in part, and then modify it, or you can reverse that decision. You can also send the whole project back down to the planning commission with explicit instructions if you wish to. The staff report also provides the September thirteenth, the twenty-seventh, and October twenty-fifth, planning commission links. I believe the council members have all reviewed that material, and so you're aware of the deliberations yourself as to what was said in the meetings. And with that, I'd like to ask if there are any questions about process or turn it over to the appellant to present their case. They do have a PowerPoint presentation to present to you tonight.
Are there any questions preliminarily for Director Loyah before we move to our applicant, appellant? Okay, well then if we don't have any questions right now, yeah, we will turn it over to our appellant's. We've allotted you guys as a team. I hear there are multiple presenters, one hour to present. And so we will move to that when you are ready.
How is this going to happen?
And just for timekeeping purposes, not to make you feel hurried or anything, but I'll remind you of how the half an hour, I'll remind you at fifteen minutes, I'll remind you at five.
Counsel, staff. The, let's see. Okay. My name is Fred Wise. I am a friend of the appellant. I have no financial interest. I have no financial interests. At the September twenty-seventh Planning Commission meeting, the six commissioners there voted that the Westwood Garden Apartments project be sent back for improvement. A month later, the October twenty-fifth meeting, there is about two hours of input, public comment, discussion on the revised project. There was a motion, there was a great delay before a second could be found. The five commissioners then voted, four in favor, one against. Commissioner Judith Mayer opposed the project as it was submitted. I believe that the Planning Commission acted in error, and my presentation will explain that. I don't propose that I know more than the Planning Commissioners about being a Planning Commissioner, but I think that there are some errors here. The question is, how could four experienced Planning Commissioners have made a mistake? I'll outline this. So first, what does the code say? The project has to meet the code requirements, the project has to be beneficial for the people of Arcata, it has to be run by the intent of the general plan policies, and the project has to meet the requirements and intentions of the general plan and of the code. So the project is in a planned development area, so let's look at the definition of a planned development. It's a development of land as a single unit, taking advantage of modern site planning techniques to result in a more efficient use of the land and a better living environment than is otherwise possible through application of, without being a planned development. The code definition, let's see, of the purpose of the planned development is to ensure that it meets high standards of environmental quality, public health and safety, the efficient use of cities' resources, and the purpose, intent, goals, policies, programs, and land use designation of the general plan. The planned residential development requirements are to incorporate a mix of residential types, unit sizes, styles, in a coordinated manner to provide larger, more usable areas not affected by site coverage, and protect natural resources and site features. At the September twenty-seventh meeting, the commissioners had issues with finding F, finding G, finding H, and to remove finding A. There's a lot there. I'm going to concentrate on finding G. The proposed project will produce a comprehensive development of superior quality, because not just in my opinion, I think I'll prove to you, that this is not a project of superior quality. Arcata, let's see, yeah, here we go. This is finding G. Again, the proposed project will produce a comprehensive development of superior quality, including any of the following, and David was very clear about this, it's not limited to these, and it, but these are typical, a variety of structure placement and orientation opportunities, an appropriate mix of structure sizes, high-quality architecture design, and importantly, an increased amount of landscaping and open space, improved solutions to the design and placement for parking facilities that might not otherwise be available. Does this project comply with finding G? Does it have appropriate variety of structure placement and orientation? Well, as you'll see, the orientation opportunities are ignored. Each building shades the one next to it. I would say no. High-quality architectural design, we'll cover this in a bit, I would say it's very, extremely poor architectural design. The tenants are the losers. I would again say no. Increased amounts of landscaping and open space, hardly. This project has minimal useful open space, as you'll see. Developer may state that there is an excess of open space according to the regulations, and that is true. In terms of the number of square feet, by adding up a whole lot of small parcels, we get to a large number, figure, but it is not usable open space. So it's, plus, the open space, as you'll see, is typically in shade during the day. So the answer there is no. Let's see. So it's zoned as planned development, it must conform to higher standards than if it had been designated, not been designated as a planned development, and this is to ensure a higher-quality project would be built at the site. This is something that the City Council did, David can tell us, but twenty years ago perhaps. I ask that you respect that council's decision for the zoning. This allows, the, the planned development designation also allows more discretion to achieve the goals that are beneficial for the city. The first design was returned for revision, but it's, I, I understand it's the October fifth design that was approved and is now being appealed, but it's useful to look at the reason why the previous version was not approved. A major requirement was, request was for more open space. The design does have some more open space, but not really enough. So here's the design. The green, of course, is open space, grass, the blue are the current buildings, and the pink are the new buildings. There's a hundred and two apartments there, identical size, all identical, four hundred and sixteen square feet, three hundred and ninety-four square feet of interior space. It has eleven separate buildings. Nine of the eleven buildings are parking on the ground floor and apartments on the second floor. So essentially, nine of the buildings have one floor of living space. I hope you understand this. Seventy-eight apartments have parked cars underneath them, twenty-four are actually two stories. The circled areas here, 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 and here are of great concern. These are two-story buildings, twenty-two feet, eight inches in height, they're about, say seventeen feet to the eaves. You can see that space there. People who live there and there will see no sky. I'll say this later. The walls between the buildings, these are twelve feet apart, these are, I think, twenty, these are eighteen. The eaves are eight to thirteen feet apart. So the question is, how much daylight will they see? This is a person thirteen feet distant, it was either thirteen or twelve, it's hard to say from the drawing. His view is of the wall. Here's the sky coming through the eaves. He'd have to be lying down on the floor, looking up to see the sky. If it was on the second story, it's just as bad. He'd be lying with his head here to see the sky, and there's, there's the path. If it was eighteen feet apart, actually, let me go back a second here. This is the wall for the outdoor open space, and you can see how close it is to that building. This is the railing, this is the entrance stairs and the, and the walkway for the entrance to the people in this building. That's eight or nine feet from there to his window. Let's see. And these are eighteen feet apart, it's, everything's a little better, but a person can still not see the sky unless he's lying with his head on the floor right there, looking up. Second story, same thing. I hope this is clear. I'm going pretty quickly. For the residents who've been living in these apartments, they currently have a view, well, their, their view is to say the second level deck entrance are eight feet from their window. The people who live in the central building of, right now, have a view of the sunrise to the east over their hills. The next slide shows what their view will be. That's what's replacing, currently they can see the sunrise. So normally, we like to see two-story buildings for housing in Arcata at least. So as I mentioned earlier, these are not really two-story, I mean, they're two stories physically, but, but the vast majority have one level of housing. Seventy-eight apartments are on the second floor, their downstairs neighbors are parked cars. I regard this as an extremely poor use of available land in Arcata. Some people have called this the Motel Six design, but in actuality, Motel Sixes are better designed than this. Here's outdoor recreation area. You can see there's going to be two hundred and twenty-two bedrooms of occupants who'll be living here. These strips of grass are ten feet wide. That's considered recreational area. The distance between those buildings is twenty feet, there's decks, there's a pathway, it's ten feet of grass. There are three community gardens, this is one of them up here, they're about four hundred square feet in size. This is the recreational area. This is the largest area that's not a strip. It says nine hundred square feet, that is a mistake, I apologize, it's actually sixteen hundred square feet. The question is, is that enough for the occupants of the apartment? Now, we talk about solar shading. I can go back and show you the orientation of the buildings. The buildings are oriented about as poorly for solar shading as could possibly be. Each building shades the one next to it. The recreational area and the gardens are surrounded by buildings on all sides, okay? This area, this recreation area, is shaded at noon for four months of the year, at the highest point of the day, it's shaded. It's, for half the year, it's half-shaded by nine AM, it's two-thirds in shadow for most of the day. For ten months of the year, half or more of this area is in shadow for the majority of hours of the day. In law, there's a concept called implied warranty. If something is called by a name, it should perform the functions of that name to a reasonable person in a reasonable sense. These are called community garden areas. That's a building, that's a building, that's a building, there's another building there. They're surrounded by buildings on all sides. For six months of the year, these gardens get full sun for one or one and a half hours a day. One garden never gets sunlight for six months of the year. I would not call that a garden. Each building, because they're parallel, has solar shading on the adjacent building. The, in mid-winter, which is the worst time, of course, there's fourteen people who get sun out of two hundred and twenty-two apartments. The rest of the residents get zero sun. At no point in the day do they get sun on their building, any sun. So is this a recipe for mildew and mold? Absolutely. And not just in the north buildings, although these were pointed out by the Planning Commissioners. Planning Commissioner Dan Tagney, "I feel bad for the north building, it's twelve feet between buildings, does seem minimal." Planning Commissioner Judith Mayer, and these are quotes, "When we're looking at the need to protect the healthy living environment, taking away light from north-facing units in that northern building doesn't seem the way to do it." It's taking away light in north-facing buildings, north-facing occupants in all the buildings. The north building is just the worst of them. ADA access is deficient. This is something that is normally corrected at the permitting stage, but I pointed out for a few different reasons. As you can see, these are wheelchairs, you know, the, to get in to the bathroom door, a person in a wheelchair has to go here, then here, open the door, open the door all the way, go back again, go up, turn around, and go in there. Okay? There's, it's not well-designed for wheelchair access. The, it's actually against ADA regulations. The patio door is not large enough, the closet door does not have access to the closet, you can see a person in a wheelchair there, this is sliding door, there's no access. The, there's not, I don't think there's enough room to take a shower, okay? This can be remedied, and, and at some point will have to be remedied. The parking is also deficient, there's a hundred and one seventy, one seventy-one parking spaces, they have four, the ADA minimum is six. It also has, the ADA parking spaces have to be closest to the ADA units, in this case, they're not, they're farther away. But this can be remedied too. What bothers me, and I would go to here, is the general sloppiness of the application. It was not designed by an architect, and it's clear that it's not designed by an architect. There's a lack of thoughtful design, and the same indifference to ADA requirements is shown throughout the project. Here's an example. This is the entry door to the apartment. The door opens up, and you walk right into the kitchen sink. There's no place to put groceries, no place to hang a coat, no place to put mail or keys. The gas wall furnace is here, means you can't put furniture in front of it. Now, gas appliances are already banned or discouraged in fifty California cities, and I'm sure we're going to do it here real soon, but the developer is not required to not use gas, it also has a gas stove and gas water heaters. When I talked about Julian Berg's design, I include it here. This on the left, this is the design of the studio apartments, a hundred and two identical apartments. Here, you see the door, you walk right into the, into the kitchen sink. The middle one is Sunset Terrace Apartments on Foster Avenue, from Kirk Kramer. Big improvement. Here's the front door, you walk into a living space. Okay? And then on the right is Julian Berg Design, which has, there has a closet, shares a closet with the, the occupants closet and a front door closet, bathroom, and the kitchen is kind of down, down the hallway. Given what you know, do you agree with the findings? Does the project incorporate a mix of residential types, unit sizes, and styles? Absolutely not. Does it meet high standards of environmental quality and public health? I would say no. Does it satisfy the intents and goals of the general plan? Again, I would say no. Does it take advantage of modern site planning techniques and what we know about solar shading to result in a better living environment? So we have the simple question, why was this approved by the Planning Commission? Very simple. The staff report contains false and misleading information. I'll get into this. There is key areas where the staff report is in error, this is not my opinion, this is a fact. And it also seems to be a fact that the Planning Commissioners took that information as a primary consideration in their approval. One, how many people will live in these new apartments? The staff report uses the figure of two-point-three-six persons per unit. This is a standard figure, and the staff report says, it's on, in your packet, page fifty-one, "It can be expected that the hundred and two new units may provide housing for two hundred and forty-one community members." What's wrong with this? The two-point-three-six figure is a community-wide number, it is not meant to be used on a one-bedroom apartment. I hope you can understand this, it's a false, misleading statement. The, the, the staff report says, "Could be expected to or may provide housing for two hundred and forty-one community members." It does say "may," it does say "could," but Kimberly White, at that time a Planning Commissioner, believed this because she said, we, well, if, I'm looking at a hundred and two units who have housing for two hundred and forty-one possible community members. The staff report says that there's eighty-four indoor bicycle parking spaces within the buildings. It says this three times, but there's no indoor bicycle parking. Now, how much difference does that make? The difference is that any biker, any bike owner with a decent bike, an expensive bike, doesn't want to leave their bike outside. They don't want to leave it in a, in a area that's not protected and can't be locked, and under a carport, a bike can rust. The higher-quality development have indoor locked bicycle storage. The current Westwood Garden Apartment has indoor locked bicycle storage. This would eliminate that. There's no mention of a forty-eight-inch redwood tree. Now, the staff report doesn't, isn't required to specify the tree. But this is what it says, "The trees scheduled to be removed are a mix of fir, pine, willow, and other unknown species." This is page sixty-five in your packet. The actual requirements is just to list the number of trees that are over sixteen inches diameter. But it seems kind of improper for staff to not explicitly call out the largest tree of the property that has to be removed. And to call out a redwood tree as being an unknown species, I think is a little disingenuous. There's something wrong. But this is the biggest false statement, unrestricted affordable housing for the community. I mean no disrespect for community development apartment, you've heard me talk here, that I feel they're underfunded, there's overworked, you might say, or have too much to do, and I don't know what anyone was thinking when this was written, but I want to know what you, members of the City Council, think of this statement. And I don't know what anyone was thinking when this was written, but I want to know what you, members of the city council, think of this statement. "The proposed two-story construction materials and design provide important unrestricted affordable housing for the community." It's page 63 in your packet. First of all, there's no such thing as unrestricted affordable housing. Housing can be restricted, restricted by income level, but if it's unrestricted, it means there's no criteria. So unrestricted affordable housing is a meaningless phrase. Housing, Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD defines affordable as costing no more than 30% gross income in community utilities, but there is no affordable housing in this project. It's not specified. So again, for the staff report to say there's affordable housing for the community is very misleading. And I believe that the shortcomings of the project and the inability to make the findings were kind of disregarded or minimized by the planning commissioners because they, they were told this supplies affordable housing. So what do they say? Chris, Commissioner Figueroa, "We need to do what we need to do to move forward with having affordable housing." Commissioner White, "I'm looking at 102 units, 241 possible community members. We have the question of, is there a guarantee it's going to be affordable?" Vice Chair Scott Davies, I'm going to vote John Barstow in his absence to say this makes sense because it meets our needs for affordable housing. Now, 30 minutes before these comments, David Loyas spoke. We're talking about a different subject than affordability, but he pointed out that this project is not subject to Housing Accountability Act because it does not have affordable housing. It's market rate housing. He said this explicitly, but it doesn't appear that the three planning commissioners heard that. It appears that they read the staff report, they referred to this project as affordable housing. At the time, the discussion that, where this was brought up was about the exceptions that the applicant was asking for. So, when the planning commissioners had their deliberations, there were at least three opportunities for David Loyas or Joe Matar to step in and correct the commissioners' misstatements. Unfortunately, staff did not, and the vote was made based, I believe, and based upon the statements that the commissioners made in their deliberations, that this was, be supplying affordable housing for the city of Arcata. Would it have made a difference if they had stepped in? I think it would have. I think the vote would have been different. I think that the commissioners were far more compliant about the inadequacies of the project than they would have been because we all want housing, and we all want affordable housing. There's a lack of cohesive, contiguous, open space. The open space is in little pieces. The lack of privacy resulting from having buildings so close, having someone's balcony eight feet away from someone's window. The solar shading of the buildings and the yards and the solar shading of the gardens, making the gardens perhaps useless. All this and more were made more acceptable because it seemed that the project was providing affordable housing. Again, "The proposed two-story construction materials and design provide important unrestricted affordable housing for the community." It's a shame that this happened, but this is what happened. This was the staff report. If the statement had not been in the staff report, I think the commissioners would clearly, or had staff made certain, the commissioners had disregarded this clearly incorrect statement, then I don't, I think it wouldn't have been approved. So, there's a further error, which is a little subtle, so I'll ask you to follow this. When the time for a vote came, there's a motion, there's lengthy time, as I mentioned, before a second can be found. The issue was this. The applicant had asked for two exceptions. One was for the location of a building for trash containers. That's not a big issue. And, but the larger one was to grant an exception to the Arcata's land use code for personal outdoor open space, for personal private recreational space, as it's called. The building code calls for 150 square feet. Now, we're clear that in no case that we know of in Arcata has that been a requirement for building. The developers asked for a reduction, and it's granted because 150 square feet is a lot. So the applicant asked for a reduction to 48 square feet, which in normal circumstances, but reasonable. In this particular project, because the apartments are so close and have so little sunlight, I think giving people a little personal outdoor space seems very desirable and necessary. How close are they? There is no other apartment building in Arcata that has buildings this close together, not even close. As Commissioner Judith Mayer expressed it, if the project were to be turned down, she expressed that the developer could, in theory, appeal, come to you, the city council, and get the project approved without the exceptions. It'd be kind of an automatic approval. If there are no exceptions, you wouldn't have grounds to deny it. And there is a benefit, the applicant, or the developer, excuse me, is doing some riparian zone restoration. There's a condition of approval that's very valuable. But the flaw in the thinking is this. If the applicant came to the council and said, "I can live with 150 square feet," there's not enough room in the lot, on the parcel, to build this because of the size of 150 square feet. It's, it's necessary to have a lower amount. There's not enough physical space. So Judith Mayer's concerns were actually unfounded. So again, can the findings be made? Does it incorporate a mix of residential types, styles, types, unit sizes, and styles? No, they're all the same. They're all identical one-bedroom. Does it meet high standards, standards of environmental quality and public health? Not with the public shading that's there, the solar shading. Does it satisfy the intents and goals of the general plan? This is a more subtle question, involves knowledge of the, of the general plan. I had hoped to have Ann King Smith here tonight, who was involved in, as a planning commissioner and the general plan 2020 strongly, the, to talk about this. And lastly, as we discussed, does it take advantage of what we can call modern site planning techniques to result in a better living environment? Clearly not. Because of the parallel, what I call barrack-style buildings, it's the worst possible solar orientation. Does it comply with finding G, that it produces a project of superior quality? As I mentioned, orientation opportunities are ignored. Each building shades the one next to it. I consider this to be extremely poor architectural design, having cars parked below the unit so there's only one level of unit. And is there increased amounts of landscaping in open space? Obviously not. So, at the September 27th meeting, it was, the planning commission requested that the applicant make some revisions and bring it back. It gave him six months to bring back a revision. This was the first revision. I think it's slightly better, but the same issues that were there at the September 27th version are there in this version. And I believe that if it had not been the errors of fact in the staff report, the project would not have been approved. We all know we need housing greatly in Arcata, and I think the feeling of the planning commissioners, I can't say what was in their minds, but we saw what their quotes were, that they accepted this thinking that it was affordable housing. So, we need housing, not one level of housing.
Fred, I hate to interrupt you. I just want to let you know that your hour, you're, we're halfway through that.
Okay, thank you. I'm just about done. Thank you, Sarah, or Mayor. The, this is not the housing that we need. I think it can be, I think the applicant to do a better job. Here's what the future could be. We could encourage the developer to design a better project, perhaps with a mix of unit size, more open space, more sunlight, and a higher quality of living for all the people who reside there. It would probably result in fewer units, and that's just the way it is. Two, we can encourage the developer to construct a different style of housing than cars downstairs, people upstairs. It's a very outdated design, not conducive to happy living, inefficient use of valuable land, it's inexpensive to build. Three, which is a little more complicated, but I think is possible, find some subsidies so the developer can build taller. A four-story building can be tucked away in the back north corner of the, of the parcel would not have the solar shading problems that these barrack-style rows of buildings would have. Now, this project is off the street, it's tucked back, it's out of sight, you don't, you wouldn't even notice it, no one will see it. No, we won't be reminded of it as what I consider a failure of design. Only the people who live there, the existing tenants who've lived there for decades, some of them, and the new tenants will be affected, but it could be improved so easily, and that's what bothers me, and that's why I'm here. The people of Arcata will be the losers. We need quality housing. We can do better. Thank you. One other thing, as David Loyas mentioned, you have options. You can deny the project outright. You can ask for modifications of the project. You can approve. You can deny the appeal, approve the project outright, or you can send it back to the planning commission, which is what they did for the first version of this. And hopefully, the applicant would come up with a better design than this, that it's better for the city of Arcata and the people of Arcata. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay. And now we will hear from the other member of the appellant team.
Thanks. Thank you for that, Fred. Very succinct. Whenever you're done with that, David, can I borrow the mouse from you? Will it still work over here?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, so Fred took you through the, I guess, the history of the project and where we're coming from with the appeal, and, thank you so much. So, I'm going to take you through a lot drier points, but really the nitty-gritty of the land use code, as well as the housing elements policy that point directly to this project being contradictory to what Arcata has already outlined as its goals and intent for housing in Arcata.
Can we get the PowerPoint on the TV? Yes, that was the desire. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, so here's a brief outline what we're going to go through, specifically the findings for planned development permits, as this is a planned development permit type B. We'll also go through some aspects of the Housing Accountability Act, as well as misleading statements and errors in the staff report and as evident by the commission meeting quotes. So I think those are important to take a look at in regard to all of this. And I, just for, you know, the record and for every, you know, to refresh everyone's understanding of the site, I think it's important to go through and take a little tour of the site. Let's see. Because, let's see. We'll go a little bit faster, but just so you get a sense of scale of, of the site. So over here, we can see the carports. Where the existing carports are is where the new carport slash apartment buildings would be built, not in the same footprint, but even closer to the existing buildings. So as we walk the perimeter of the apartment, you can see all of these little green spaces adjacent to the fences. These are the, the small spaces that are being added up to say the new site has over 8,000 square feet of recreational space, when it's not an appropriate designation of space for outdoor recreation. At best, it's landscaping, but we can see this sidewalk, like the existing infrastructure is proposed to be taken out to put new infrastructure in that does a worse job of fulfilling the purposes of what it is. For example, these sidewalks would be next to these bedroom windows. These patios, in large part, would be gone, and the eve of the carport or the new buildings and the eve of the existing buildings would be so close, you essentially have an uncovered tunnel between buildings. Just taking a look here at the riparian area that is proposed to be restored, the details of which weren't really explicitly stated. But again, this is, you know, a small concession on part of the city. This is something that community members could get involved with. There's a lot of people who would be happy to support this, and I don't, I would assert it's not an appropriate trade to approve this project because there's riparian area being restored. I'm going to speed this up just a little bit in lieu of time. Let's see. So we can see the outdoor space here and the way that the buildings are oriented, as well as the mature trees. It takes a lot of time for those trees to build up, and it's, it's a great resource for our community. But the orientation of this, this building is smart in a lot of different ways. One of the main things that you lose in the proposed design is line of sight with our community. So for those neighbors who have kids who play outside, even for anything going on in the back, we all have eyes on this space. And so my time living there, neighbor's time living there, we've had little to no instances of, you know, vandalism or camping or anything going on because our community is tight-knit, and we hold each other accountable in that sense. But it, it gives a real sense of community. And you can see, you know, it's a large outdoor space, but it's not appropriate for the number of buildings that are being proposed. So, a little bit, you can see it's a sunny day, too, and the buildings are getting sunlight, which is nice. These buildings were built in the 1960s before modern vapor barriers were required or utilized. So it's necessary for the buildings to receive sunlight, and it's so we don't have that mold and mildew growing. So here, I'd like to point out this area. You see the walkway here. It's already established, this green space here. So in the proposed design, this sidewalk's going to be taken out. There's going to be a new sidewalk constructed directly next to this bedroom window. So where I'm standing here is where the new walkway would be, whereas, you know, it's like, we already have a walkway that you can, you can utilize this area in a different way. So, without seeing the other mature trees and stuff like that, I'm going to move on because I think you get the, get the idea. This is a, this is a beautiful place. And I really want to stress that we're not against building here, we're against building in a dumb way. So, sorry for that phrasing, but that's kind of what it comes down to. So, in the design that you saw, there's one direction and light for the existing buildings. So it poses a real problem when you're proposing to build buildings on either side of the existing buildings, essentially treating them as an obstacle. So there's no other opportunity for people who are living in the building to receive sunlight if, you know, something's constructed in front of their, their window now. There's a lot of nice qualities about the Westwood Garden Apartments, and there's a way to keep these qualities with a new development, to welcome new neighbors into our community, but in a way that's respectful to everyone. So, let me take a look here at this north building area. Just one example of, we're going to take a look at the solar shading at different times of the year. I'm going to pause this real fast. So as Fred brought up with the solar shading in the different buildings, you can actually see this is, make this a little bit slower. So this is the summer solstice and the winter solstice, and so these boxes here are the proposed buildings here and in the middle and on the sides. The larger boxes here are the existing buildings. So right now, we're going to look at how these, how the shadows are cast and what available sunlight is actually available to the residents in all of the, the buildings, proposed or existing. So this is during the winter solstice, so it's pretty shaded anyways. But, you know, just take note of this building, existing building, and the proposed building. With this small space in between, as well as the shadows that are cast from the building, this is a really, really poor living situation that is not guaranteed to be affordable at all. Market rate housing, if you take an average of the apartments that this developer owns, it would be over $1,000 a month for a 416-square-foot dark hole. And, but, that's, that's that. So here's the summer solstice, a little bit better, but you can see this building is shaded out all the time. This building's getting shaded out. We're at, what? We're at, what, midday here? Yeah, just over midday. So even at the height of summer, this is all shaded out in a way that we feel is inappropriate for or conducive to healthy living, for the building or for tenants. Here's just a quick mock-up. This is not the north building. This would be a southern-facing building. The ambient light that's available in the apartment, and this is a mock-up of what the new view would be with a development that's, if the proposed development goes through. As Fred mentioned before, the ADA accessibility in the proposed building doesn't make any new designs for ADAs. And so, again, this just points to the general disregard that the developers have for their inhabitants. It is a clear and blatant move to maximize profit at the expense of anyone who would think of living there. And so for anyone who's wheelchair-bound, this is what their daily life would probably entail. It was meant to be a little funny, but I'm hoping that that's not the case. Not appropriate way to live, especially in your own home. So this is the points of appeal that we'll be going through in depth, just an overview. But we will move on to our findings for planned development permits type B, which this development is. Okay, so for type B planned development permits, first thing, the development has to follow the requirements for type A permits minus 1B. So that's the line that's crossed out. Number one, the proposed project carries out the policies and intent of the general plan. This is very, very, very important. Remember that. The intent of the general plan. As we'll go through, it's a little bit easier to see. All right. So again, this is literally type B planned development permits. I wanted, you know, this to be available for you guys to read through, so I won't spend too much time reading verbatim the type B planned development permits. But it does state that the project will produce a comprehensive development of superior quality, including increased amounts of landscaping and open space, improved solutions to the design and placement that might not otherwise occur for more traditional development application. So this planned development permit gives the applicant more creative license to come up with things that are going to be longstanding, long-serving for our community and the tenants. You know, it's justifiable and will result in a more desirable development. So each, that's in speaking to each proposed exemption, whereas the exemptions in this project are contradictory to that statement completely. And that is the reduction of private outdoor space, recreation space, from 150 square feet to 49 square feet. That's the most egregious one. So this is the biggest point in the type B planned development permits, that we should be asking ourselves, you know, if the project meets these findings. Especially, you know, especially, you know, the point of increased amounts of landscaping and open space, improved solutions to the design and placement, and the comprehensive development of superior quality.
Really, now you've got about 15 minutes left.
Okay. Cool. All right. So going through land use code. So due to the nature of this development, the land use code allows for more discretion. The planning commission could make more discretion in saying, "This does not meet the findings," rather than allowing it to move forward without any changes, as happened. This project is not under the protection of the Housing Accountability Act because it is asking for exemptions. And as Fred pointed out before, that was kind of, it was either missed, it was glossed over, but it definitely swayed the planning commission's opinions of the project. So in the design review, each one of these design review aspects, we can go through and say, "Does the project meet these findings? Does it promote the orderly and harmonious development of the city?" No. Is it preserving important natural features? No, not at all. All those points that we brought up are of the benefits of this design are taken, are not taken into consideration. So let me move through these a little bit quickly. So in all of that, "The proposed development is a degradation of the living standard on this parcel for current and future residents." Yes, we do need housing, for sure. And we are not against building on the site, but it is very important to recognize that in denying this project, we give the developer an opportunity to come to the table with something better. And it sets a precedent for future development to not be wasting the city's time, the public's time, but, you know, taking livability into consideration, not just profitability on behalf of the developer. So moving forward, and I'm hoping that this is just a refresher for you guys and that you have already read through all of this. One thing that I want to point out in the staff report, specifically, we had already talked about community members, trees, housing element policies. These are the housing element policies that were referred to in the staff report that the project met, that were outlined by the city of Arcata. And in reviewing these, I think only HE11 applies. So it's contradictory to the housing goals set by Arcata and exacerbates the issues of our community currently faces in terms of housing need and housing affordability. Let's see. Getting to the, this is inefficient design, shading, lack of privacy. Okay, here's a view of that walkway that I mentioned before in the video. And you can see, it's like we're taking out existing infrastructure and replacing it with ones that might be more cost-effective for the developer. Actually, I think it would be more cost-effective to just leave the existing infrastructure in place. But you can see the disregard to the inhabitants who would be living on-site here. Okay, so the biggest thing I want to bring up here is a quote from David Loyah in reference to the outdoor recreation space. David brought up a really great point in saying, "If you parse up open space into dysfunctional corridors, then you still may have met the open space requirements, but you haven't met the intent of the open space requirements." The intent is a big factor here because what David is bringing up is the fact that this proposed development is not meeting the codes that are set. And so, you know, it brings up this question of the letter of the law versus the intent of the law. The findings for type B planned development explicitly state that it must meet the intent of the law. So, you know, in looking at this, you know, we have the opportunity to bring this to the council because we live, we live at the site. We're intimately aware of the site as it currently is. This is an example of open recreation space at another Strongback property. It was a new build, so there wasn't anyone there to advocate for the build. And I think largely it was passed through either with need or just without looking at the details because either they weren't provided, or it's hard to visualize what this is actually going to look like. So this is the proposed design. So you can see, we've got a picnic area, recreational space in the, in the planned design. This is on Foster &amp; Alliance, the Twin Parks Apartments. This is the reality. This is the outdoor recreation space that's provided in the plans, largely, you know, shoddy landscaping space at best. Here's the barbecue picnic recreation area and bicycle storage. Here's the actual bicycle storage improperly installed next to the dumpster fence. It's backwards, so you can't actually properly connect your bicycle to it. So the site plans here also don't show the exterior walkways, as is the Westwood site plan. So the walkways actually look larger than the reality of what they might be or what they are at the Twin Parks. You can see in this picture here, the space between each one of these balconies is less than five feet away. When you walk into this area, it's like a funhouse. And so it looks like a bad accident, but really, it's oversight in the sea of large details that was missed, and there's no community advocacy for better housing. You know, it's a reactionary need that we, yes, we need more housing, but who does this serve? Does this serve the community, or does this solely serve the developer's bottom line? And so, you know, in conclusion, I really want to stress that, yes, we need housing, but we need housing that's going to serve us in the long term. Housing should be healthy for people. And if the earthquake was any kind of wake-up call, it's that we don't need stilt housing, we need good foundational housing. And we need to have the future in mind when, when we do build our housing in terms of having efficient design, making avenues for, not retrofitting, but future fitting in terms of like electrical charging, things like that. It's not required right now, but it shows that the developer has the community in mind. Yeah, and also, you know, I think it goes without stating, but we'll state it nonetheless, that sunlight is required for healthy living. To propose a development where community members are blocked from sunlight at the height of summer is not healthy for people. And so when we think of the health of the environment in a, in a building that's outlined in the land use code, we're talking about the frogs and the trees and the grass and everything, but we're also talking about the people who are living there, first and foremost. And I think that's an important factor to bring up because we've got a lot of environmental, strict environmental standards, but when it comes to actual, the healthy living of the people living there, that's been missed more and more as time has gone on. So I hope this, you know, glossing over of like the hard, hard facts wasn't missed, but we tried to put everything together to give you everything that you need to say, "This does not meet the findings that is outlined in the Arcata Housing Elements Policy, nor the land use code." And so, taking all this into consideration, the developer bought this piece of land to develop it. I don't think there's any scenario where, if you deny this project, nothing's going to be built. This gives the developer an opportunity to build something that is going to serve the community, and it might even, in fact, serve them better in the long run. So it, it's, I can't stress that enough. We do want to see something built here, but we want it to be built respectfully to, you know, not just us, but the people who are going to live there in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So before we move on to a presentation from the applicant, do we have any questions or comments from the council to our appellants or to staff?
Do you want to take public comment as well for that?
Oh, yeah, we can. Sure. Okay, then let's do that because, yeah, in case the applicant wants to respond to any of the concerns of the public as well. We will now go ahead and open this up for public comment. If you are here in person and would like to comment on this item, please make your way towards the podium. You will have three minutes. I know we have a couple folks that have previously arranged to cede their time to others, so that will happen as well. Okay, let us begin public comment.
I would like to cede my time to Dan Duncan.
Thank you.
My name is Daniel Duncan. I have visited the Westwood Gardens and watched online the two planning commission meetings on the proposed development. You could sense a certain uneasiness in the interactions among the commission members and in the presentations from the public. When it came time for a final vote, two of the commissioners remarked that they felt stuck between a rock and a hard place. Well, it looks like the rock won. And now here we are, sitting in the hard place. What to do? There are many issues facing us in our hard place. One of them is the housing crisis. Arcata, like practically every city in America, is facing this gigantic post-pandemic problem. But Arcata has another pressure that these other cities don't have. It's this, the big elephant in the room, Cal Poly, which continues to gobble up as much land as it can get, thereby reducing the available land in town for ordinary development. Cal Poly needs beds, over 6,000 of them. That's a lot of pressure. I believe a big part of Arcata's housing problem originates from the state mandate for hyper-fast expansion of the university and not from the normal pressures of growth of a town. Due to this situation, the main responsibility to house the incoming students, in my opinion, belongs to Cal Poly, not the city. They can only admit as many students as they can house. As soon as this is recognized and acknowledged, the huge pressure will be lifted off the planning commissioner's shoulders. The level of uneasiness about housing development in town will abate considerably. Another pressure at play is the land use code as it exists. It tends to hamstring the commission's power to demand higher standards from developers. The code needs to be changed. I believe this is underway. But in the meantime, the commission still has some discretionary power to judge what comes before it on its merits, and not solely on a project's contribution to a housing crisis inflated by the university expansion. Some of the commissioners, I noted, openly expressed dismay with the Strongback design under appeal today, but voted for approval anyway because of the urgent need for housing. This shortage in Arcata is going to take years to remedy. As we all know, there is precious little land in the city limits available for development. This situation makes it even more urgent that we, as a city, develop what we have left conscientiously and well. Let's be honest and acknowledge that the Westwood Gardens project has been aimed to provide beds for students. That's about the most you can say about it. It's a barracks, it looks like a motel. No family would want to live there. And who among us really wants to see that lovely grassy sward entirely covered with regimental buildings packed close together that serve one purpose: student housing? The cluster of roofs with their solar panels is good, but that's not enough. The people who live under those roofs also need sunlight to stream into their The people who live under those roofs also need sunlight to stream into their rooms as well as to fill the corridors in between buildings. Sunlight is not an amenity. I and others propose that the city council give Mr. Strombeck another opportunity to produce a housing project at Westwood Gardens that citizens of all demographics might enjoy, whether as tenants or as fellow citizens who want to feel proud of the architecture in their town. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
I think there was a lot of questions about affordable housing tonight, and I would highly recommend everyone, it should be mandatory for city council and planning commission, Cal Poly, Ollie, affordable housing was the topic. Brown bag special given by Dan Co., Chris Dart. So start with the definition of what affordable housing is there. And basically, for their projects, anything from four stories down is going to be affordable. Anything above that is not feasible economically because of the cost of foundation. It's a whole different construction. So they also got into affordability here in Arcata. And the fact that we're not seeing affordable housing is because, it's not because anybody's stopping it. It's because the median income in Humboldt County and what the cost to develop these apartment buildings is is not feasible. So that's sort of like why everyone's a little bit in La La Land on this because that's why we're not seeing housing. And this is also something I've read about in the New York Times for the last year and a half, but never had anybody specifically address it. And I think Dan Co. is someone that knows a lot about affordable housing, that wants to build affordable housing. So I'd like to see affordable housing built here too. But unfortunately, this whole process has been a little crazy. I'll stand up a little bit for the city from the standpoint. They had a checklist on this project and it met all those criterias. And that's why the the staff approved it. I think the planning commission, the same thing. They they didn't love the project. You could see with the video, it's basically a 1960s building. It's kind of pretty basic. They actually said, you know, the 100-plus new units, very basic. So they weren't in love with the design. I think it really came down to the fact that there's nothing on the horizon as far as affordable, I mean, housing in the future, period. Whether it's affordable or not, there is nothing that's out there. The only housing that's going to be built is going to be built by Cal Poly because they have a half a billion of dollars. They don't have the same kind of laws that affect us here in the city. They can basically do what they want. They can purchase property and and do what they want. So I think that's why they made a decision. It wasn't an easy decision, but it was a decision because there's not going to be any housing built for a while here. So that's maybe a little bit not what the audience here. And I understand if I lived in their situation, I would not want this to be constructed. And I feel probably the same way that they feel. But I think you have to account for all the different variables here.
Thank you.
Hello. After the very first public comment period back in, I guess it was October, after Mr. Strombeck was sent back to jury visions, immediately after the meeting, I chased him down because I want to talk to him about how this can be a fantastic project for our community, for the people that live there now and will live there in the future. But Mr. Strombeck would not even look at me. I said, Steve, Steve, I wanted, this can be great. Wouldn't even acknowledge me and walked out the room. Okay, there's a wonderful project that can house as many or more people than what is proposed here. The the Sorrel Place has 88 bedrooms. The Sorrel Place would fit in the courtyard. That is more bedrooms than is currently in this plan. That is more people living in the same space, more efficiently. Each one of those units is significantly larger than what is proposed here. The only thing keeping a great development from this space is the terrible development that has been approved. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and I attended the planning commission meeting in October where this was approved by the planning commission. And having a long time ago been a urban planning student at UC Davis, I looked at the plan and I could not believe this was 2022 and that was the design being proposed. And also, when I spoke earlier today about visionary and future-thinking people on the dais, you know, in the climate reality, the concept of building buildings, I know it's currently allowed, but we've got to be future-thinking and, you know, using gas furnaces and gas water heaters and having cars parked under apartment complexes. I mean, this is very old-fashioned and not very inspiring design. And as the people who spoke before talked, we need livability. We need people to be able to live and thrive in the future housing in our community. And this design is in no way, shape, or form that. And open space and trees and green and sunlight are such important components for our future. So I do hope that the city council will not allow this project to go through.
Hey, I got a little flustered and I missed one of the big points that I wanted to outline. And also kind of in rebuttal to the man who spoke about approving the project because there's nothing else on the horizon. Well, what a better reason to make sure that it's serving our community in terms of types of apartments, you know, not just studio apartments, but one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. But I just want to bring up Housing Element Policy number five. So the proposed development only consists of one-bedrooms that are 416 square feet with no assurances or guarantees to its affordability. So the average price for a current apartment of similar size is $1,222 a month as taken from the current developers listed apartments for similar sizes. So for any future residents, this would, if they were to be paying one-third of their income towards rent, this would require an average annual income of $43,992 per year. So according to HUD, persons paying one-third of their rent or more towards housing are defined as housing burdened. So HUD defines cost-burden families as those who pay 30% or more for their housing and may have difficulty affording necessities such as food, clothing, transportation, and medical care. Severe rent burden is defined as paying more than 50% of one's income on rent. So as defined in the 2019-2027 Housing Element on page two, the median household income for the city of Arcata was $30,866 in 2017. So using these figures, the proposed development would only service above moderate incomes. So we can rightly assert that anyone truly in above moderate income bracket would opt out of living in army barrack housing. So, and this is also from the 2019 to 2027 Housing Element. Overpaying, and this is a quote, "Overpaying is defined as monthly housing costs in excess of 30% of a household's income. A significant proportion of Arcata's residents, 56.92%, are overpaying for housing costs. Severe overpayment is defined as monthly housing costs in excess of 50% of a household's income. A moderate proportion of Arcata's residents, 35.77%, are severely overpaying for housing costs. Among lower-income households earning 80% or less of the area median income, 49% are overpaying and 35% are severely overpaying for housing costs." So more housing is needed, yes, but especially housing that's affordable to households at lower incomes, end quote. That's in the Housing Elements Policy for Arcata. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Council members, Glenn Caldwell, Sunset Area. Just comments on the aesthetics of the project as it stands. Essentially, you're being asked to sacrifice everything that's desirable and aesthetically pleasing about this site. Seems like the developer could do better. I hope that they will. Facetiously, I would just say, if this is what we're going to allow, why not allow this project on the Arcata Plaza? Let's just fill everything up with barracks if we need housing, you know. I mean, so I hope we can do better. I hope the developer can come back with a better design. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
I wanted to show the council something, if I may. Put it on that spot.
This hall and that wall is roughly, it's the space between buildings.
All right. Do we have any more in-person public comment before we move to Zoom? This is the last chance. If you are here in person and would like to comment on this item, for you to make your comment. I'm going to say it one more time. Yeah, here, I knew you guys were waiting back there. Okay, so this is our our last chance for in-person public comment on this item.
Hi, my name's Trish. I'm a renter in Arcata, have been for seven years. And I think that when planning housing, we need to look at what's best for the people that are going to live there. And I would never want, I would not want to live there. And I think that the sunlight and that aspect of it really affects people's mental health. There's a lot of students that come up here. They're not used to the cold weather. And sunlight's really important for everyone. I mean, it makes a really big difference. And I don't think we should take that away from renters in Arcata. It's very important. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I just wanted to further reinforce the idea that this nebulous concept of affordable housing should not be used as a buzzword to, you know, sweeten the deal for planning developments that are short-sighted and, quite frankly, degrade the quality of life of the current tenants and people who will live there in the future. Affordable housing is definitely needed in Arcata. I know this personally. In 2021, I spent almost four months homeless here because of a lack of affordable housing. And I currently regularly pay half or more of my income for my rent. And I can say that the negative aspects of this development in the way it's planned currently are not worth sacrificing the standards of living that we should be having here for people in the name of that nebulous idea of affordable housing. And without a definite protection or guarantee of what the rent should be there and would be guaranteed to make it truly affordable housing, I think that's, quite frankly, a worthless consideration in the face of a very poorly planned development. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to move to online. If there's nobody else in person, I think almost everybody in this room has commented anyway. So we will move to Zoom to see if there's anybody online to comment.
Okay, I'll just give it a second to raise a Zoom hand if you wanted to make a public comment on the Westwood Gardens apartment appeals. And seeing no public comment online.
Okay. There's no public comment on Zoom. All right. We will now move forward to a presentation from the applicant. So we have the applicant here to address some of these concerns and perhaps answer some of our questions as well. Okay, actually, sorry. Okay, we are, we have multiple council members that want to take a quick five-minute break. So we will take a five-minute break and then we will come back and hear from the applicant. Ready to get back to it? Hearing from our applicants. Okay, thank you. So we will now be continuing new business item C, which is the Westwood Gardens appeal. We, for those of you tuning in at home, we just heard from the appellate. And now we will hear from the applicant of the project.
All right. Great. Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Mike Nelson with Lakos Associates, here to represent- My name is Mike Nelson with Lakos Associates, here to represent the project on behalf of the applicants, the Strombeks. So we've heard a great deal of public comment this evening, more than I'm accustomed to in terms of the length and breadth and detail that went into the project. So I am not going to make a whole nother, whoa, what happened? It's not my computer. So I'm not gonna present the whole project from the beginning, not considering this a de novo hearing where we're starting from the beginning and showing the entirety of the project. I think you've seen just about every inch of the project already in great detail.
Sorry to interrupt you, can we get the presentation on the other screens? Yeah, thank you, perfect.
Okay, great, thank you. Maybe. All right, great, thank you. So what I wanted to do was just go back through a couple of key points, rather than trying to go through and sort of have a rebuttal point by point, slide by slide. I think that would take quite a bit of time to do that by each one. So I just wanna kind of go through some of the key things that came out of the considerable discussion that occurred in the community meetings onsite, in the two Planning Commission meetings that we've heard quite a bit of commentary from already. And a couple of key points for that is, you know, really based on those meetings, based on that input from the community, from the residents, from the Planning Commission themselves. The project went through an entire redesign. We understand there's a lot of passionate opinions about, is this a good design or a bad design? Some of those are subjective, and some of them are really tied into what your code says. We have some different interpretations about whether we meet the code requirements or not. The project was designed to meet the land use code and the general plan, both in its letter and in its intent. There are clearly different interpretations about how those come out when you apply them to a specific project under a microscope in every minutia. But it does meet those standards, it does meet those requirements. And considerable site redesign was made based on all of that comment and input to come back with what we think is a better plan. That site design included reducing the amount of tree removal, making a number of changes to the parking, making a number of changes to the building design itself, and adding more details, articulating the buildings somewhat and offsetting them, changing the siding, the colors, adding quite a few more small details to the project, increased the ADA, a number of other smaller improvements that were made based on those comments. One quick thing I wanted to point out, because it hasn't really come out in any of the other comments, but I wanted to be clear that this entire, there's three-quarters of an acre of the site here that is down in the riparian area that is proposed for public access and for a trail improvement to provide connectivity through the project to the adjacent property that's been purchased by Cal Poly Humboldt. We also added fire emergency ingress egress access point to the adjacent property to Cal Poly Humboldt as well to facilitate, we don't know exactly what they will do there in the future, but something will occur, so we wanted to provide that connectivity for fire ingress egress as well as the trail. You can't see the trail that well because it meanders under the trees here, but that is three-quarters of an acre that is included in the project to go to public access. It is not currently accessible now by anyone, it's got six-foot chain link fence around it. It's not a benefit to the residents or the community or the public. Hasn't really been brought up much, but that is proposed as an enhancement and an improvement that's been discussed with city staff, environmental services. I just wanted to mention that because it wasn't brought up in the other discussion very much. Wanted to say also that, you know, it is difficult when there are such strong opinions, but considerable deliberation was made by the Planning Commission. I think that your staff has done their jobs to balance all of the needs of the city and meet the code requirements and help bring housing. And I think the Planning Commission did their jobs, which is not an easy job, but they did do it to the best of their ability, and they are all very knowledgeable and experienced, as are your staff. There are a couple of things in some of the comments that stood out that I do want to come back to and mention again, I'm not gonna try to go slide by slide, but one example that a lot of time was spent on in the discussion was showing a particular project, the Twin Parks project, and how close the units are, how many units there are, what the parking looked like. I just wanted to mention that one briefly because I worked on that project, as well as the three other projects that were brought up as examples of other housing designs. The Twin Parks project was purchased from the city of Arcata by the Strombeks. That purchase agreement included a specific unit count of the 56 units that were built there, it was part of the housing needs for the city at that time. That site unfortunately had some limitations, there was a major fault hazard there, there were some wetlands, there were some other constraints to the site. In order to achieve the 56 units, it had to be really squished into that corner, but that was part of the actual agreement with the city at that time. So it does result in some constrained sites in that push together. That project did also include a dedication of land back to the city for open space, as well as constructing a trail that connected into the city's trail system. So I just wanted to mention there's specific reasons why it came out that way and why it looked that way, and wanted to touch on that one in particular. A little bit about the design and the construction approach to the new buildings, there's been a lot about that, we get it, people don't like the design. It is better than what is there now. What you can see there now, there's two-story stucco structures with flat roofs. These new buildings meet all of the California Energy Code requirements, they are much, much better buildings by their design-construction with higher insulation values, with solar panels, with numerous other benefits that the existing structures do not have. Then I wanted to touch on the distance between the units' decks and how far apart they are. And we saw an example of what 12 feet looks like in the height. Almost every residential zone property in the city of Arcata has a five-foot setback on the side, which means you can have two-story structures 10 feet away from each other looking right into the next project, next property's window. The 12-feet example is more than what's allowed in just about every parcel in the city. So we have, in the most cases, 12 to 15, 18 feet, that's more than what you have between adjacent properties. Just one really quick thing on the trash enclosure, the deck size exceptions. Those are, we think, are fairly small concessions, clearly not the opinion of some of our members of the public. Those two things are generally within the purview and the authority of your planning director to approve on projects, unless it is a planned development. If it's a planned development project, it has to come forward to the Planning Commission. Those two things and similar concessions are done routinely throughout the city. The other, a couple of the other project examples that were brought up, the Sunset Terrace project, it was 144 units, it has the same deck reduction size, just a few blocks away from this project. And it also is 144 units of all of the same one-bedroom unit design. There's a clear precedent with the city of approving and supporting projects with similar requests. The, there's a number of questions that were brought up about the sort of the demographics and the number of people per unit, I will leave that to staff to address if that is something you would like to get more detail on. But that's not a proposal by the applicant. The applicant does not propose a certain number of units in each apartment, whether it's one or two or four, that's not a part of their proposal. That was kind of picked on in the staff report, so again, I'll leave that to staff. But I wanted to point out, that's not something our applicant is proposing, a specific occupancy or number of unit occupants per unit. I want to touch on the unit mix. Again, I mentioned the other nearby project that are all the same units that was previously, relatively recently approved. But the thing that may not be obvious about the unit mix is that all of the existing units there, the 62 units, they are one, two, and three-bedroom units. So it's not looking at the whole project in its context. So yes, the new units are proposed as studios, but they are part of the existing project, which already has a mix and does not have any studios. And so in the Strombeks' experience with the other projects that they own and operate, studio units are in the highest demand and they have the least inventory of them. That's why they're proposing all those units on this project. So it is, there is a unit mix on this project in its totality between the existing 60 and the new proposed, as well as within their other projects that they own and operate. So they have other properties with two, three, even four-bedroom units, they have very few studios, and it's in the highest demand. There are a number of other things that were brought up, kind of about energy and gas and ADA design, and those are all things that are either subject to other regulations. ADA is a federal standard, that's not something that we sort of throw on the table and decide whether we like it or agree with it or not. You either meet the standards or you don't. If you don't meet the standards, you're not issued a building permit or a certificate of occupancy. So that is not something really to be debated in this type of a venue, it's a yes/no, do you meet the requirements or not? The energy things, there are some valid points, there are some valid concerns, the project is proposing what meets the current standards now that the city has adopted, and also not insignificantly what they can actually get done and built with all of the requirements with PG&E. It's very difficult to get a new project built, the timelines that it takes to get service through PG&E. We've all seen issues of PG&E having some infrastructure issues in Southern Humboldt and other areas. There can be real practical limitations to when you can actually get your service, whether it's gas or electric. That is an aspect of this project. It's what they can get sooner to get the project underway and under construction. I think I missed one thing here. Just one sec. Well, I just wanted to say, sort of from the beginning, based on the community meeting input, based on the Planning Commission comments, and again, not everyone is necessarily happy with it, but we did make real tangible changes and improvements to the project based on that input, that were, some of which that came at considerable expense to the redesign as well as the actual construction costs. And the Strombeks also have, own a number of other properties that do have parking underneath, there are other examples of apartments and projects with parking underneath, a couple over here by Wells Fargo Bank, a few blocks away. It's fairly common and has been well-received by their other tenants and their other properties. Just wanted to mention that one. So with that, and looking at a few other specific things that were brought up, we proposed covered parking, not enclosed parking, there may have been some misunderstanding about what was proposed, but we proposed covered. It could easily be enclosed. So the parking is underneath the carports, we thought it was more readily accessible for tenants to be able to get in and out and get to it. There is, there are some enclosed lockers there now that people that put their bikes into, but it's not sized to city standards, it's just a couple of big sort of garages that all the bikes get thrown into. We actually thought it would be more convenient and better this way, we would be happy to close in those carports that have the bicycle parking in them, if that's something the council would like to see. Another is on the community gardens, there's been a lot of discussion about that, that's not something that the Strombeks originally proposed as a part of the project, but it was something that was requested by the tenants during the community meeting, so we put those in there. Now there's some comments of, well, you didn't put them in the right place, or they're gonna get too shaded. That was based on a request from the applicants. We would be happy to either not have them or to potentially relocate them to the open space, or the recreation area that was noted here at the front. I think there was some discussion of whether that was 900 square feet or 1600 square feet, it is 1600 square feet. That area could be, the community garden area could be put there, and that recreation area could be swapped with the community garden areas as they're noted here. So that's one potential opportunity there, if that seems like a better fit. And again, it was based on requests from the community meeting. The, there's been a lot of discussion about the recreation area, and, you know, it is, the city code does not go into great detail, it actually only says you have to have 2,000 square feet of recreation area for any project over a certain size, starting at 30 units. So if you have 30 units, you need 2,000 square feet, if you have 300 units, you need 2,000 square feet, 3,000 units is 2,000 square feet. Not that we're seeing projects of that magnitude, but that's the way your code is written. We proposed over 8,000 combined of the recreation area. And that recreation area does not include the three-quarters of an acre down here that will be opened up for public access and a trail added. And those recreation areas are meant to be, to meet those requirements for the specific project. It's not meant to be a public park, and this park is nearby, there will be additional recreation area here down along the riparian area. So we understand everyone may not agree, but we have exceeded the requirements of the way they're written. So just one, well, I think that's it for now. Again, trying not to go into every single slide, but I could go through each of the slides and have a rebuttal for them. But I'd really like to hear any specific questions or comments or things that the council would like more detail on.
Great, okay, let's open it up to the council for questions. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, I had a couple, but you actually answered them. One of mine was just, I mean, on ADA, I understand how building works, so I was, you know, just wanted to kind of ask for the public's benefit, you know, that the codes must be met or you can't occupy them, so, but you did already cover that, so that answered that question.
So Stacey, just to follow up on that, the plans are going, they have to be submitted to the building department, and the plans are gone over by the building department. Any changes that need to be made are sent back to the developer, they have to make those changes to make sure they fit within the current building standards. So that will happen, and if things don't meet right now, the plan, they will go back and they will be corrected so that they can be approved. I just wanted to add that to the ADA.
Yes, thank you. Actually, I'm glad you'd asked, because there's one thing I forgot to mention, that one of the things that Strombeks are looking at right now is that a lot of the existing units could do with upgrades and with ADA upgrades as well, so they're looking at that in the existing units as well to go back and retrofit them for ADA. But the comments were focused on the new ones, so I just wanted to address that.
I think that's, we always have to go back and remodel and upgrade our existing units over time. Not that I have that many, but compared to what is being proposed, but it's an ongoing thing, that people should be upgrading their units no matter what.
Yes.
I guess, talk to me, maybe David, or you sir, about affordable housing and what, where that all comes into play, because that's kind of what I'm struggling with right now.
Yeah, I'll give kind of a brief overview of where that terminology entered the discussion with the Planning Commission, and I'm, you know, happy to answer any more detailed questions you might have. There was never an implication or intention that the project should be viewed as affordable housing in the sense that we use them, you know, sourced as HUD terms or, you know, affordable housing projects where we use, you know, grant funds to support them. Those would be restricted units where you have a regulatory agreement that gets recorded on title and it establishes the rents that can be levied on those apartments, and it's usually within income brackets of at least 80% area median income or lower. The comments that were made in the staff report about affordable housing tie back a little bit to the discussions that we've been having about infill in general, where you can have units that are affordable by design is another sort of catchphrase that's been used for them. Units that have, you know, that are, you know, where the buildings aren't very ornate and the units are small. and the units are small. And as a result, the market rents that those would fetch would be lower than what you could, you know, what you get if you were renting something that was, you know, higher end. And so that was one of the comments that was made in the staff report real early in the discussions around the findings. John Barstow kind of brought that forward as his talking point, why he felt like the commission could make the findings because it was this unrestricted affordable housing. Unrestricted in the sense that it doesn't have a regulatory agreement, but it's affordable by design. That's not to say that the rents that are going to be requested for those units meet affordability for any particular income level, but that on a square foot basis, they would be cheaper than other design types. So that's all that was meant by that. And I think that John Barstow and his reasoning, not that I'm speaking for him, but based on what he said in the, in the meeting, reasoned that, you know, this is a very plain, you know, design. And, you know, the smaller unit sizes would result in that. So we replicated, staff replicated that into the findings, which was why it was a discussion point.
But when I, when I was watching the planning commission meeting, that was clarified that these are not pre-qualified affordable units like Danco builds, that they were affordable because of the size of them. And so that was, I, I heard that a couple of times.
Yeah, I watched it too, just wanted to clarify.
Clarified that.
Yeah. And just to assume the natural economy of things, that as you build more units, it makes a unit, you know, general citywide that it could be slightly lower. However, we're, you know, seeing in this area that we've maintained a pretty high price for a studio apartment, so.
Well, I, I just want to be like, ask a really direct question. David and Director Layer, in your opinion, do you think that the planning commissioners were confused?
No, I think the planning commissioners, you know, the planning commission meeting, especially one as complex as this, is, is pretty fluid. There are, you know, discussions, you know, in any kind of situation like that, you know, some things are misunderstood, they're misheard. Planning commissioners ask for clarification. And I believe that the majority of them, if not all of them, understood the project in very good detail by the time they made the decision to adopt the findings that are in your, your packet tonight. You know, that, that was my impression. I did not poll the planning commissioners after the fact, but I, I believe that, you know, they asked for clarifying questions. Some of the comments that were, you know, you know, cited in the presentation tonight, you know, they, they certainly were parts of the, you know, clarifying questions that planning commissioners asked or, you know, that were corrected, you know, later in, in conversation. So it would be my impression that they, they understood full well the decisions that they were making. This project is not unlike many projects that the planning commission has, you know, reviewed and considered before. And, you know, as we said in the presentation, I think the applicant agent has, you know, admitted this to some extent and it's been commented on in the public at, at great length. These are not fantastic design buildings, but that's not what the code requires either. So it, it does meet the code.
So there was one other thing that the planning commissioners talked about, that they have to give variances on, and I think that is the open space. Is that what it is? The, the square footage? And that was brought up that night too, that they really need to look into that and make a change. You could reiterate on that.
Yeah, the, the private outdoor recreation space is set at one fifty right now, one hundred and fifty square feet per unit. And, you know, we've, I think, had the appellate acknowledge that that's too large. I don't think there's ever been a project that's been approved in, in the city that has that. I'm not sure where the number comes from, but yeah, we definitely need to amend it. Certainly that'll be part of this round of code amendments as we go through the major updates that we're doing to our, our planning documents.
I heard more than two planning commissioners mentioned that they need to do something about that. Then I had a conversation with Julie Vasade on something else and she said, you know, we've got to figure, fix this because we keep giving variances on it.
Okay, well, I have a few questions that I want to ask and then maybe a few points that I want to make. So this riparian area that's being updated here, and we keep saying that's going to be open space, but is it going to be developed in a, in a way that would provide recreation opportunities for people? Or is it just going to be a creek bed with a bunch of trees next to it? Will there be any sort of, yeah, trail access or, you know, picnic benches, space that people can actually walk a dog, take some time to relax, anything like that?
Yeah, so the answer to that, what we proposed is to put the ten-foot trail through there. Again, it's hard to see because it's under the, it's under the tree.
Ten feet wide or ten feet long?
Yes, so it's ten feet wide.
So like that's not much.
Yeah, ten feet, that's all you get. No, it goes from the, from the entry to the project along here. Would require redesigning these parking areas and a few other things. It come here, it would come in here, it goes under the trees and would go all the way through to the Cal Poly property to the west. There is also some English ivy and some other invasives and other things in there that, that would get cleaned up as a part of that. But because it is sort of natural riparian area, it's not intended to become sort of park-like with intensive development through there. It's more of the, the trail to be able to pass through. That is something we would work with city staff on and with environmental services. I will say, we originally offered that as a dedication to the city to say, we'll give the city the, the three quarters of an acre, but it was viewed as more favorable to do it as an easement that we would make some improvements on rather than it becoming city property. But that was our initial proposal.
I'd also just point out that on packet page seventy-six and seventy-seven, the conditions of approval, B dash seventeen, B dash eighteen and B dash nineteen refer to that riparian area where there's a requirement for James Creek Riparian Enhancement Plan prepared by a qualified professional that identifies the, you know, the restoration work that would be done. That would be approved by environmental services director. And then ultimately, when that is completed, there'd be an offer to dedicate a public access easement and offer to dedicate, dedicate a public drainage easement on those sites.
Okay, so my second question is just, you know, for general understanding, and I know this was kind of asked in an iteration in, in the planning commission, but I want to hear it tonight. I mean, just why, why not taller buildings? And why not more density and just less number of buildings to allow for what is obviously a priority of this community, which is more open space for people to live and exist?
Sure. Yeah, and I would, I would defer to my client if you really want to get into the sort of dollars and, and sense of it, but for them, for what they design, what they build, what they manage, what they operate, this is what is cost effective for them to be able to build. And that's based on the decades of experience they have of, of building housing in Arcata going, you know, back, back quite a ways. So that's, that's their perspective based on their experience and their construction costs and what they operate and maintain.
Okay, so it's a, it's a monetary thing. It's an easiness thing.
Well, it's also just, you know, the long-term management and care and, you know, the staff and maintaining a three-story building requires different equipment and different things than you have to operate others. So it's an overall, it's a construction cost and an overall, overall operational approach. Some of those, you see some of those kinds of things with, you know, hey, do we have ladder trucks that can go five stories when we're approving five-story buildings? It's like there are other practical things that come along with the longer-term operation, maintenance and, and management.
You indicated earlier as, as a possibility, I, I just want to put out things that maybe I would want to see. That, yeah, that covered bike parking is very different than bike lockers, an actual enclosed space that you can put a bike in and know that it is not getting moisture from our very humid environment that causes rust on a nice bike, especially when you're looking at studio units that are this small. You're not going to be able to finagle your bike in there. You're going to be taking up half of your living room if you're going to, you know, put a bicycle in there. And so I think, you know, especially with a lot of students, you're, that's a commute route, right? You know, perfect amount to ride on your bike up to campus, that to be able to offer, you know, a enclosed lockable, whether it's by key or opening by key code, FOB, whatever, to the residents here is unessential. And so I.
We would be happy to do that and have that as a, as an additional condition. Those covered bike parking spaces are underneath these two buildings, this building here and this building here, which also house the laundry. So they're basically under these in, in what are, would, would have been carports. And they could be, they could be easily closed in and secured. So we'd be happy to do that.
Cool. So also, I mean, I don't know if we're going to get into fine details, but I, I just, I don't know, I start running ideas in my head, but I, I look at this, this buildings here and I, I think about where these community garden spaces and where these open spaces are located. And I see these two westernmost buildings here, which are those designs of having the carport underneath. And so in my imagination, I either say, at least get rid of one of those buildings completely or think of a possible idea of eliminating, because it seems like there is a large amount of parking within this project. And that the possibility of even being able at least under one of those buildings to eliminate the parking and provide an extension of that community space toward, under that building where you could put things like, you know, I've seen other, I don't know if they're Strombeck properties or other owned properties locally that have, you know, like a community space with like a picnic table and a barbecue and, you know, somewhere where people can enjoy some outside space. But especially, you know, in Arcata, having a covered outside space actually might be more ideal, that could butt up against this community garden and expand, you know, outward to be able to, you know, provide more space so you're not trying to have a picnic or eat your dinner outside and enjoy company with friends where you're, you know, stuck in this little tiny space here. So that, that's just a, a thought of some design that I, I think that could make it better or even, you know, eliminating one of those buildings altogether to improve the outdoor space.
You know, when you were thinking about the community gardens, you, you have certain plants that you really want to grow in more shade in your vegetables and you have some that you want more with full sun. And so I was thinking about that conversation when Ray Lina was pointing that out, or maybe it was Fred, that they could work well for different kinds of plants. So, I mean, I, I really don't know how much sun there will be there or anything, but, and I think possibly taking away that larger area you have in that corner, which looks like it'd be easy, that one would be, in some ways would probably be a shame to put a community garden there when you have a, that would be my thought anyway, because it's a larger area where you could have a picnic table, et cetera.
Yeah, we're, we're very open on the location. Again, it was, it was something that was brought up during one of the meetings and, and Strombeck said, sure, no problem, we're happy to allow community garden space. But none of us are necessarily professional gardeners. So when there was the comment of like, hey, not enough care was put into this, like, sure, someone who is really thinking about looking out there every day and going, where would I put my plot, they're going to have a much better idea than we are where the best place to put it is. It was something that was requested and offered on the plan. Where it specifically goes is, is not.
So one of the things that will happen is if you have community gardens and they aren't utilized, eventually they will become something else. They'll be taken away or taken out. And otherwise they've become really difficult to manage for the owner of the property if the tenants aren't actually keeping those up. Unless somehow rather the tenant, you know, there's a farmer that goes in there and manages those. I, I can see evolution of things changing over time.
I mean, just approximately, it's really hard to tell from this image. I mean, how big is that space, that community, those on that west side?
This one?
No, the west side of the property, the little pocket community gardens.
Up here or these ones?
No, the, the, yeah, the gardens next to the little buildings.
That's where they are, right. There are these little ones in, in there. Yeah, I think they're each, you know, five, eight hundred square feet or, or so. They're about, this is sixteen hundred, this rec area. These are about half of what that is. So they're probably six to eight hundred square feet each, maybe a little bit more. We.
So I do, I have kind of a open-ended question because I, I feel like us starting to just throw out like ideas, could you change this or could you change that? I think that that could definitely get away from us. You, like, you know, the applicant knows what the concerns of the community have been and what the pushback has been. And is there, you know, knowing what their concerns are, is there anything else that you could add or change to this project that would still make it pencil out for you? That would, you know, are there, is there more that you could do to help satisfy the residents that are there?
Sure. So, yeah, I mean, I'll summarize a, a couple of things and then I'll defer to our client to, to see what else may be a possibility there. So I had the enclosed parking, so we talked about that. So we will definitely do that. We're happy to do that. We're happy to put the community gardens of equivalent in whatever the best location is determined for those. We also can increase the deck sizes to eighty square feet. So we've looked at that pretty closely. And the issue with the decks is it's, it's one is a matter of proportionality because if you take the hundred and fifty square foot, the way it's written and the reason it's been accepted every time, and not as an actual variance, which has its own specific findings, but as an exception, is that because it's, these units at a hundred and fifty square feet, it'd be like thirty percent of the floor area of the unit would be decked. It's a very high percentage. Your coastal land use code requires an eight to ten percent, whether it's upstairs or downstairs. What we have, what we have proposed is twelve percent of the size of the unit itself. So it actually exceeds what the standard is right now in your coastal zone. And we, we can't do the hundred and fifty square feet. It's not, it's not possible. It's not practical. I think one of the appellants mentioned this. You'd have to project the, these little decks here would have to project out nine feet to be able to get to the hundred and fifty. It would go out into the travelway for fire trucks. It would put the decks and the walkways and things that were discussed even closer to each other. It's not practical to cantilever out for nine feet on a structure this, this size. So there'd have to be posts out there, just flat out, it's impossible to do one fifty. But looking at the width of the units and the projection, we could take those up to eighty, to eighty square feet, which it's, which would be fairly practical to build. We'd, we'd be happy to take that to eighty square feet from what's currently proposed.
Did you mention the bike lockers in that as well?
I did, yes. So, well, what we would do is we would enclose the whole area, which is more similar to the way it is now. It's like you said, it's basically kind of two garages with roll-up doors. It's not spaced out to what the city code is for bicycle spacing. It's just jam as many bikes in there as you can. And what we laid out was the actual dimensions of what's required by the, by the code to fit in the number. So what we would do is close, essentially close in those carports and then that would be locked. So there would be interior there. As far as the other, the comment that was made about having some covered sort of recreation space, something I have to confer with our, our client on, we only have about three extra, it's either three or four extra parking spaces in this whole thing, in the whole project. And we wanted to have at least some for some guests or some loading, unloading. I mean, right now there is one space per unit. And your code allows you to go below that, but our clients' experience on a number of projects in Arcata has been that having less than one parking space per unit creates a lot of, a lot of issues for them, including like some of the ones over by the community center. There's been issues in the past of tenants parking on city property and having calls and complaints about that. So we very much try to stick with at least one space per, per unit, even though your code, your code does allow less than that. So that's something I'd have to, I'd have to check on, but potentially three spaces that might be reduced.
I think it's actually a good idea because over, I, I use a really old name, the Colony Inn, but over on Union Street, you'll see how many cars park in front of the playground. And those, I think, are all tenants for the development, but there isn't enough parking on site because they reduce them to meet our codes. And so I, I think it's not a bad thing to have a. because they reduce them to meet our codes, and so I, I think it's not a bad thing to have enough parking on site and not reduce it, and there's always an interest for guests to park, and you have someone come and visit you or spend the night, you need a place for them to park.
Is that parking lot full on a routine basis currently?
Not to my knowledge.
And so what's the current, like, ratio right now to number of units and number of parking spots?
There will be less parking per unit with the project than there is now.
So currently, there is more than one space per unit?
Yes. Yeah. But there's also existing as a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. So there's more oc- more occupants per, per unit on the existing. But there will be less parking overall than there is right now.
So, I don't know if you have more questions or more comments, but if not, you know, I feel like the planning commission, having watched it, did a good job, and what I would like to do is to affirm the planning commission's action and deny the appeal. But, I mean, do you want to continue to discuss it, or do you want to have more public comment?
So, if, if we don't mind leaving your motion just on the table for a minute, I just kind of wanted to, I took a lot of notes, and I thought I would just kind of read through my thoughts for, for you guys to see if there's anything, you know, that we wanted to talk about. Um, so, first of all, you know, it was mentioned that it was a really, seemed to be a very difficult decision for the planning commission, and I can absolutely understand that. This is not an easy decision. Um, a lot of the decisions that are made by council or planning commission are difficult, and so I appreciate that there was hesitation, that there was a lot of conversation and, and pauses on their behalf as they waited out. Um, it's difficult when you have, um, residents that are not wanting the change, that the developer is, you know, what seems to be legally allowed to make. That, that's tough for everybody, so I, I appreciate that. You know, there are lots of different building models for that developers and construction companies have, and we've talked about some of them this evening, and there are a lot, there's needs for different styles. That's why people do what works for them. We, you know, it was mentioned that Danko has a certain model that they do, and that was praised tonight. In other meetings, that's not the case. Um, you know, Strombeck seems to have a model that they know how to do and that they can work with and build and maintain. Um, in market rate housing in California is extremely difficult to pencil out. And, you know, if you are in construction in any way, shape, or form, or attend housing meetings, that's the topic of discussion. Um, that's why we do need more actual, you know, true affordable housing, that we're not talking about right now, but that's why a lot of the housing that we have in our community is affordable, because certain, um, industry, certain, you know, companies have figured out how to make that model work. Strombeck has a different model that they've ma- made work for them. So again, I, I appreciate the differences in the types of companies and, and what their niches are. From what we've seen, um, in both the actual planning commission meetings, as well as tonight, I think that the project does meet code. Um, the small exemptions that have, the exemptions that have been made, like with the, the deck spaces, are common and made in other ones. I, I believe our planning commissioners are very educated and seasoned. It wasn't like there was a whole group of new commissioners up there, and they didn't know what they were doing. They've made these decisions before. Um, so I, you know, I tend to believe that they knew what they were doing. Yes, it was difficult. Could, could our code be better? Yes, I think we've all agreed on that and planned to make it better, but this is being based on the code that we have now, and that's our obligation to consider what we have now. And do we need to make some changes? Yes. And then we will hold those new developments to those changes. The planning commission did ask for changes. Changes were made. The project was designed differently to make it better. Um, there's been a couple of things tonight brought up, that, brought up that could make it better. I think the, the enclosed bike parking is, I don't think that that, there should be any problem with that. Um, that's the one I'm kind of, I would be comfortable in, at, you know, wanting to include, um, in this. I don't know about, um, you know, like, reducing three parking spaces or the increased deck size. I could see where, um, I don't, I don't want to get into the weeds on that. I could see where there could be, you know, in- increasing the deck size might be a good idea, but then that puts, puts it closer to the next building, and that was one of the complaints brought up tonight, is the space in between, so I don't know that we necessarily, you know, maybe that could be something that we, um, were to ask the appellants, if they would think that that was a good concession. Maybe, you know, we ask them for that. And I... PG&E came up, and I think that's beyond our control, but that is something that we need to start, as a community, pressuring. Um, we will be having an all-electric ordinance come before us in the very near future, and, um, this has added a whole wrinkle to that. So that is something that we, as a community, need to do, is to figure, I, I don't know how we do it, but we've got to find a way to pressure PG&E to get it together so that we can go forward with the changes that we need to make in our community without be, you know, being stuck in a, in a place of not being able to build. On just a personal level, my heart goes out, you know, to the residents of that building that are feeling, you know, upset and that their, that their space is gonna be compromised. Yes, it is. You had a beautiful, huge, wide, open space, a real hidden gem in our community. So I, I get that. I get the emotion behind it, and that's what makes it a tough decision. It's what made it hard for the planning commissioners, and that's what'll make it hard for us to balance all this. So, that's a lot, I know, but we did hear a lot tonight, and those are my thoughts, if anyone wants to talk about those or share more of their thoughts.
Yeah, and, and so I am looking at my, my script here, and there is a part that says, "Close with appellate with any final thoughts", to, to respond to kind of the response to your response. And, and so, yeah, a- at this time, I, I saw you guys raise your hands a couple of times, just to want to address a couple of points. Um, a- and so if, you know, keep it brief, ten minutes, five to ten minutes, um, and just respond to any of those things that you would like to respond to. That's, that's fine, if you guys would like to come up now. Yeah. Yeah. Have the chance. Come, come do it. Yeah. Cause, cause there was a few points that you guys wanted to directly respond to, I feel like, to, to what has already been said, and to what.
Yeah.
It's hard to hear, it's hard to, for me to hear you without speaking into the microphone.
Are there any more questions for me, right, at this time?
Yeah, do we have any more questions for the applicant at this moment? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Give me one second. I'm gonna go over to some slides. I'm gonna go up to the beginning. So, I added this in so we could see it, um, but this is the original design that the planners brought to the planning commission. So just in reference, we can see, um, the changes that were made between this design and this design, you know, namely coloring and littering, uh, the design with trees, so much so that, you know, there, trees here are actually blocking, like, the existing walkways. So this is a disingenuous representation. Obviously, it's not, you know, to code or anything like that, but we can see between these two designs, there's really not that much of a difference. And, and so the core issues that we're bringing is that, you know, this is affordable for the developer, sure, um, but at the expense of the people who are going to be living there. And so with an estimated two million dollars of annual revenue for the develop- developer, once this is implemented, um, you know, this is going to pencil out. It's just a matter of time. Um, you know, given the fact that, uh, this is only one of three developers within the area, we really want to stress that this is, this is a chance to, for them to step up. In denying this project, they're going to come to the table with a better design. Letting them steamroll through with objectively, you know, un- unthoughtful design, and, 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 you know, again, I, I really want to stress, we want to see development in this area. We're not clutching, uh, you know, our precious backyard, you know, to the nth degree, that we want to see new neighbors and new people join our community, but not at the expense of the people who live there. So, I, and, you know, just to speak to economics and things like that, but the, the number of units that would be required to make overall, like, apartments affordable is probably astronomical, and this idea of supply and demand, I think, is, um, you know, un- unfounded. Let me get to slide forty-two. Um, I, I don't know if we want to go over Housing Accountability Act in the background there, but, um, let's see. And then, um, let's see. So... Again, you know, we're advocating for livability here, not a rejection of any development. And, you know, just, this has been a, a long and arduous process of giving our opinion in, in lieu of, uh, it not being asked or sought out. Um, so the community meeting that the Laco representative, um, referenced was reactionary to the first planning commission meeting. Um, it was the first time that the proposed, uh, you know, development had even been shown to the public. And so, um, a lot of that was reactionary in terms of, you know, it was the first time we even saw, like, what the heck was going on. And so, you know, a, a, a true partnership would be really nice. It's not, um, something that we ask a requirement of, but, you know, it's not hard. You know, just the amount of ideas that were coming up, like you mentioned, Stacy, you could really get into the weeds, but it just shows, you know, how much more thought could be put into this project. And just, you know, low-hanging fruit, for instance. So, uh, Fred, do you want to make a couple different points here?
Well, okay, so I, I, I want to keep this, this brief and just maybe, like, new information, because we have, you know, we're getting to the point where a lot of this is, is becoming redundant.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're, we're keeping like, cause I, I said five to ten to Raylena, we're, we're still within that five, so like, yeah, like, quick.
Um, first, I, I appreciate what the developer is trying to do. I appreciate the reduction in trees to be removed from the first version to the second. It was excellent. Uh, he's providing fire access to the lot behind him. That's excellent. The ride pairing restoration is great. No question about it. I never asked for a hundred and fifty square feet of open space. I know it's not possible. I said that in my speech. It's absolutely not possible. I'm not proposing less parking. I think the developer made a good point in, at the planning commission level about having one parking space per unit. What I say is there need to just be fewer buildings. It needs to be smaller. It's, uh, it's a hundred and two. I think it needs to be seventy. The bike parking is great. I appreciate that. It should be done for standard bicycle requirements, which I don't have on the top of my head, but I have looked up. There's a pretty standard thing on that. How many square feet is required? Uh, I want to make the point, this is not about the residents, the existing residents of the garden apartments. It's about quality for all of Arcata for the future. Uh, I am sorry to the applicant. I mean, I apologize in a sense that there were errors in the staff report. It's not their fault at all, and shouldn't impede them, but it's unfortunate that they existed. There were many changes between the two. I applaud the applicant for that, but it's still not good enough. The, uh, parking underneath is a design that is part of the past. Now, the gardens can be relocated. That's great, but every single space is shaded. Every single space. Uh, the, the, uh, yes, councilman still mentioned that some plants like shade, but, uh, there's, there's more shade than that in these places. Now, the main thing that I brought up before, oh, he, he said that the buildings, these new buildings are better than the existing buildings. Of course they're better. Any new building would be better. The two things. Oh, and, excuse me, uh, Sunset Sar- Sun- Sunset Terrace Apartments have smaller balconies. Yes, they do. The buildings are farther apart. They don't need as much open space. The two things that I mentioned, or that I'm, that I refer to. The... The question was asked directly about this affordable housing situation and what was said. Uh, David said, "It was never the intention that this be viewed as affordable housing." I believe him. But that's what is in the staff report, and at the October twenty-fifth meeting, it was this matter of market rate being lower, affordable by design was never mentioned. The, the words "affordable by design" or the concept was never brought up at either meeting. It was never discussed. So, the question that was asked directly, what do we think the planning commissioners believed? And I say to you, these quotes, what do these quotes mean? When someone says, "We need to do what we need to do to bring, to move forward with having affordable housing", referring to this project, we have the question of, "What's the guarantee if it's going to be affordable?", referring to this project. And lastly, "This makes sense because it meets our needs for affordable housing." What could possibly be more clear than what the planning commissioners were thinking when they were deliberating? The, I'm not against housing, and neither is Raylena. We want to make that clear. This is not, we're not trying to stop this. Just make it better. That's my plea to you. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, so I, I see that, um, Mr. Strombeck is, is ready to make a comment here back. No, so this is just for the, the applicant and the appellant. This is not a public comment, period. We already had public comment on this item. We took public comment. And so if the applicant would like to speak, to run out this discussion, and then I, I think it is time, as, as we have said over and over, it is a hard decision, and you don't like to make hard decisions, so you let everybody talk until you've made up your mind.
Thank you very mu- thank you very much. I'm Steve Strombeck, and I'm the owner of the property. Uh, first of all, I think we worked really well with staff during this project, and I think staff, uh, I mean, we didn't agree at times, but, uh, you know, it takes a long time to work on a project like this. And then, we had our first planning commission meeting, and, and of course, I was a little disappointed. It went quite a long time. It was, there was a lot of discussion, and I thought, you know, of course, it was gonna go through the first time, but it didn't, and a lot of times, they don't. So we went back to the drawing board, and there was, I know she said there wasn't a lot of changes, but there's a lot of changes on there, if you take a look. We, we did, took all the input we heard, uh, both from the audience and from the planning commission, and we made those changes, and I thought we did a good job. I think staff agreed, and, you know, Mike Nelson and his staff agreed, and, uh, we did the best job we could, and we feel it's a really good project. And, you know, I'm really proud of all the projects we do in town, and so anyway, I, I hope you guys will seriously consider this, and I just appreciate your time. Thank you. If you have any questions for me, I'll, I'll answer any questions as well.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Um, do we have any direct questions for Steve, or are we ready to get down to the nitty-gritty here? Okay. So I, I do believe we had a, a motion on the table.
No, I just, I, but it didn't get a second, so we don't have a motion?
No, I, we just, we're, we're just talking. I will second your motion.
Okay, but you want to add the bike, uh, enclosures?
Yeah, I think that that was the kind of obvious thing. That was easy to agree upon, so I would like, you know, yeah, to add the enclosed bike parking areas.
Okay. So that would be affirm the planning commission action, deny the appeal, but, and make sure we have enclosed bicycle parking. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Um, okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Um, we will take a vote. Let's do roll call. Okay. Bridgette, let's have a roll call vote.
Uh, Mayor Schaefer?
When you're the mayor, you have to go first. Um, aye.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins Elizar?
Yes.
Councilmember Stillman?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so a motion passes, um, and thank you, everybody, for your participation in this process. It's, it's not an easy process, and I know how much- It's not an easy process, and I know how much effort went into it by the applicants, the appellants, the community members, and our planning commission as well. And so just, you know, thank you for all your participation this evening and in previous meetings. And, you know, your commitment to our community doesn't go unnoticed, so thank you, everybody. Okay, and with that, we will move on to item 12, which is oral and written communications. And we will see if we can bring Kimberly back in to public comment, and then we will move to staff courts. Kimberly, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. She's back.
There.
Okay, welcome back, Kimberly. Thank you. Okay, so at this point in our meeting, we move to item 12, which is oral and written communications. The city appreciates your public input, and this time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on items not on the agenda. In order to pursue into the Brown Act, council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council may be limited to three minutes, and a time limit on overall length of oral communications may be imposed. However, most people are leaving, so. If you are in person and wanting to give comment, please now line up at the podium. And if you are on Zoom, please raise your hand by pressing star nine, or raise your hand on the Zoom or press star nine if you are on the phone and would like to make comment. Please, come speak.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGarry, and I really appreciate being able to participate and view these meetings. I do send you emails, and some of you have responded. I know I've changed topics a little bit in recent times because of the situation with the unhoused people and the lack, I see, of action on the city's part. And it also goes in conjunction with our earthquake preparedness and other emergency preparedness. I just really feel that we're not in a position of confidence in terms of all of us coming together in community to respond to the emergencies as they arise. So, you know, we individually can take care of ourselves and maybe the people in our building and all that kind of stuff, but I did come to City Hall twice after the earthquake, trying to figure out, you know, has anybody got any information to give me about where to charge my phone, when's power coming back on, what happens if I need to leave my building, where do I go? Nancy Barnes died on December 5th, and the autopsy was performed, and I found out the results of the autopsy. I had to do all this on my own because I was really concerned because of how cold it was and other people I know who had died in that cold weather and the situation with the unhoused. I have been up to the Grove a couple of times, which is a wonderful new spot. It's not enough. I wonder why, in my questions to you in my email, that the D Street Neighborhood Center particularly is not being opened for emergency shelter and for warming centers and the place around the D Street Center, or any other place that the city has to help the people who are most vulnerable in our community. I'm faced on the streets all the time with unhoused people, and I don't know what to do. I keep calling around. Yesterday, I called three different people to find out what could be done, what is going to be done. It's been a month, and I said this earlier, why is the city of Arcata and the people in charge not giving us answers as to why or why not we cannot use city resources to help people in these times of great need? And I'm just really, really upset. Nancy died apparently from a heart attack type situation, but the cold did not help. And I don't want other people to die. And I want just not silence from you. I do not want silence from you anymore. It's really, really important to many of us in this community that you speak up and you lead, and you tell us what we can and can't do, and when we can do it, and what needs to happen, and we will come together and help you. But this is silence, and this inaction is appalling to me. It's appalling to me.
I want to thank you for your work tonight. I disagree, of course, but I appreciate your consideration. I wish to commend the council for your decisions on the $118,000 for the Form-based Code at the last meeting. I think it was a good decision. I especially want to commend Councilmember Matthews for the idea of going forth with the funding and then having checkups occasionally. The first check-in is due at the end of February, beginning of March, and see how the funds are actually being spent, how much is being spent on engagement and presentations, and how much will be spent on the actual code. I had suggested that the process, the come back in two weeks with staff, bring back some more information, so some clearer accounting, because I think it's very hazy as it is now. But your solution, I think, will work just fine. Thank you. The, I am afraid to predict that there'll be more fund requirements, but we'll see what happens there. During the discussion, some things came up, and I think it'd be helpful for the council and for the public to see some material that was brought up, but was not present. This was amendment number four. I would like to see the previous three amendments, which are, we've never seen, the public has never seen. The schedule of work, which I've brought up many times, there were six or eight months. It was untenable from the beginning. It's obsolete. Schedule work with Plan West. What items are going to occur on the schedule? We need to know what is really going to happen and what's been dropped. Staff said they had a timeline. We would like to see that timeline. Kimberly White brought it up. And the budget was increased from 600,000 to 700,000. I don't have a memory of that. I'd like to know when that happened. As I've said in the past, the progress on the gateway procedures is extremely slow, and I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but I don't see things changing right now. But I'll keep abreast of what I, when I do see things changing. Lastly, January 10th, Fire District is finally going to give their presentation to the planning commission. There may be some solutions in store. I've been talking, I have some ideas. I'm not saying I have the answers, but we're finally making some progress. They've been requesting a meeting since August, and it's going to happen January 10th. I'm sure you'll be able to view that on YouTube. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Fred.
I'm going to continue with the noise element, subject matter. I've done basically everything I possibly could under the law as far as going to the police, trying to work with the city, writing you guys letters. You're not in compliance. I'm just telling you that. And I also went to Plan West, because this is also something that's required for the gateway, and money has been set aside for this. Basically, Vanessa told me, though, that she has to have direction from the city as far as going to the point where we're looking at six-month studies in different locations in the city. And one that I definitely wanted was H and 16th. So I've had a long conversation with her about that. So this is something that's, it's not really an option. I mean, I don't understand why, this is your chance, actually, just to speak with the city manager, because I believe this is the opportunity that you can actually address my question. So my advice would, from your standpoint, because you're at the top of the pyramid here, and you're responsible, and you also swore an oath to uphold the laws of the state of California, and all of these elements are very important, and it's also part of your general plan. So I'm not sure whether you really understand all the elements, but this is one of the important ones. I mean, there's others, too. I've heard complaints about pollution. I mean, you have kids that are affected by asthma. I mean, this isn't just like making this stuff up. This is, I actually gave you documentation of studies in the U.S. and in Europe of how noise affects children, adults, how it affects their sleeping. And you have no idea what the compliance is all over the city, because no one's ever even done a test. It's just, any of these projects, they just say they're okay, but there is no evidence that there's been any testing other than, I guess, at the Craftsman Mall, because it was near the freeway, but you have no idea what's going on. It's interesting, last winter, when you had community members from the city out there, you had vision boards that actually said, "Our goal is to have peaceful, quiet neighborhoods." And you spend money and put these signs in. So I find it very ironic that soon after that, you know, I started addressing everybody in the city, and I'm not getting anywhere. So unfortunately, if I don't see any movement, then I have to go to the next level, which I'd rather just work with you, but if that's not the case, then I'll have to go in that direction. Thanks.
Hello, obviously, I'm disappointed with the decision tonight, but I want to let you know I really appreciate your time and consideration on the matter. Additionally, as Joanne brought up, often in times of crisis, public spaces are used to shelter people. Yesterday, I literally gave somebody on the streets construction bags and a tarp because I knew this storm was going to be terrible, and I was concerned for the few belongings that they had getting completely saturated. We are in an absolute emergency for the people that are living on the streets that need shelter and access to sanitation. If there is anywhere that the city owns that people can stay, get a shower, have their laundry done, we need to do that right now. People should be right here, literally right here, instead of sleeping outside tonight. If that's something you can put on the agenda immediately, please do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public commenters online?
Okay, this will be your chance to raise your Zoom hand. Any online public comment, last chance for online public comment. Okay, I'm seeing none.
Okay. So at this point, we'll move to council and staff reports, and are there any staff updates? And I think there might be a good one related to some of the comments that we heard.
Yeah, I will share that working with Arcata House Partnership, they have opened an emergency weather shelter. They have opened tonight. This was as a result of opening the Grove. We knew that their big push was to get everybody into the Grove, permanent residence. They do have what we'll call kind of the old pool room, and so they have opened that up. They're operating it similar to how they operated extreme weather shelters pre-COVID, pre-pandemic. So people do report to the annex, they do get fed, they do get sanitation, they do get showers, and then they do get bus shuttled out to the Grove for the night. So my understanding is, based on weather, they will for sure be open tonight and tomorrow. So if there are people in the community looking for that, they should head to the annex tomorrow as well.
And I believe they're also looking for volunteers to help with that, and so there's a number to call if you'd like to volunteer to help as well.
There is, and if you have access to Facebook, Arcata House Partnership, Facebook has put that information out.
And do we have any council updates that anybody would like to share tonight?
Well, I was just thinking about Gina Meredith and translation, and I think that's something we should think about for our goals, and that would be an appropriate place to put it into the goals and see whether or not that's a possibility. We've been talking a lot about Arcata House and what they are, they are a major provider. And I think that we, I don't know if we can do this as the city, but I would love to see if we could get them more PR about what they do. A lot of people, when I mention them, they don't know anything about Arcata House, and they do know who Betty Chin is. So I'm wondering if we can have any, you know, our social media, he's sitting right here, if there's any way that we could ask him to possibly work with Arcata House, do some stories, get them in the paper, et cetera, so that we could show all the things that we've been doing in Arcata since, gosh, I don't know, the late 80s and the 90s of all the housing, the different things we've funded through proposals that have come to us, and we've been able to come up with the funding to do that. And I think that would be helpful, because we do have people in our community think we have nothing going on in Arcata, and they're very critical, and yet, when we start talking about that, or I thought it was really interesting at a planning commission meeting, somebody, I don't know, I don't think it was a planning commissioner, or maybe it was Judith Mayer, she said, "I just don't understand why there isn't any kind of housing for low-income people in Arcata." And David just started to talk about all the projects that we have at all the places. And that was really educational, I thought, for everybody. And, you know, I forgot some of them, because there are so many, but I just think we should be talking about that and putting that information out. Anyway.
Thank you, Alex.
I don't know if you can assign your employee.
You heard it, Logan, let's get on, no.
Yeah, I know, but it's not, I can't say anything. It's, would be Karen being able to assign him something, but I think it would be very valuable for us. And all the negativity over the people that are unhappy, and I always think about Nancy. I think she stayed here. She was not, you know, you come, she's sitting outside, she's screaming, yelling, she's cursing. And we know that if you don't have good behavior, the shelters don't have to keep you, and they take, put you out. But Arcata, we did nothing. She stayed there, she did that, she slept in the day. You know, she got really good treatment. And people are criticizing us for not giving her shelter, but I think Arcata did, because she would never have made it in a shelter because of her behavior. I know no one ever wants to think if you have bad behavior, you could get taken away or taken out, but that's true. Betty Chin does it, too.
All right. Okay, any other council updates at this time? All right.
Kimberly does.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. I had to turn my video off, because I have unstable internet. I just wanted to also give a shout out to Arcata House Partnership for opening up the Grove in Valley West for an extreme weather warming center. As I left from the meeting, because I had to recuse myself from the earlier agenda items, I was able to cruise around the plaza and Valley West and Valley East and let a lot of unhoused folks know that they could go there for the evening. So I'm excited that this is a step in the right direction. And I also wanted to also second Alex on the bilingual Spanish translation as a goal. And speaking of access, this might be overly ambitious, but maybe down the road, we could consider some onsite childcare, so parents can attend our city council meetings. And I know that I've been hearing a lot from the older adult community, they would love to be here in person, but they don't drive at night. So I'm not sure if we can come up with some kind of rideshare, volunteer carpooling. I know we have a little shuttle bus that we've used before to get folks to the Playhouse Arts, and then also students who don't have vehicles. It's dark, it's wet, it's rainy, it's not necessarily safe to ride their bikes. And that was all I wanted to put forward tonight. Thank you, everyone.
We still have a bus system. Because I'm on Humboldt Transit Authority, so I have to say that, we still have a bus system.
No, I think it stops at 10, right? Doesn't it? Yeah, yep. So you'd have to leave early. The only small update I'll remind people of, there is a Chamber of Commerce mixer tomorrow night, and it is at the chamber, at their building, next to Tony's, near Valley West there. Hinden Road, sorry, what's it called? It's next to Tony's, okay? Come on. And I believe it starts at 5:30, and it will be nice to see the new space. I hear they've updated it a little bit and cleaned it up, so it should be cool to check it out there, hopefully, weather permitting and electricity permitting. Okay, any other updates from folks? We have no dates of future meetings, so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.